It's after 6:30, so we'll start the meeting as usual with the place of the legion. I would like to ask our board secretary Maria Varela, when was this, when was the notice published for the special meeting?
October 23rd.
Thank you. As the presiding officer of the special meeting of the Western York zoning board of adjustment, I can hereby publicly announce that the notice requirements provided for in the Open Public Meeting Act are not satisfied. Further, I direct that this announcement shall be placed in the minutes of this meeting. Notice of this meeting was properly given by the Western York zoning board of adjustment. And published on October 24th?
30th.
On October 23rd, 2014. It was appropriately published in the Jersey Journal, publicly posted on the municipal voting board, and filed with the town clerk. Call please.
Kenneth Blaine.
Here.
Ramon Monarch.
Here.
Casey Salvarado.
Yes.
William Garcia. Rosemarie Puerto. Alberto Chapin. Evelina Valdez. John Rodas.
Here.
Theresa Cruz.
The only matter on the agenda tonight is a continuation of the hearing regarding Meridia Boulevard, properly located at 6505-15 Boulevard East and 9-67 Street. As I remember, where we left off was questions regarding the applicant shade study by the public. We had closed those questions except for those people who were present at the last meeting. I asked them to come up and give me a list, which they did, they were kind enough to do so. And we have approximately 13 such individuals. The first one would be Ms. Gaffney. Good evening.
Mr. Chairman, before we start now, I spoke to Mr. Arancivia, who should be here any minute. I apologize for his tardiness.
And he's the one that-
He's the one that's being called in.
That promoted the shade study, so I guess we have to wait for him. While we're waiting, it might be a good idea to figure out how we're going to use the microphones to the public. Okay, we can do that. We can put that down there. Why don't we also, why don't we also put the stand? There you go. And Ramon, if any board members have any questions, we can share them right now. Right now, we're waiting for the applicant architect to come. And she's the one that's going to have to answer the question regarding the shade study. Mr. Liza, do you have his telephone number?
No, just come again, I just spoke to him about 10 minutes ago.
Oh yeah, why don't you just tell him that we're waiting, the hearing is waiting right now. And if I tell him the application hinges on his being- Is it better to have this one down there and that one up here? Because this is the stand. Is it better to have the one with the stand down there?
Yes.
Yes.
Officer? Officer? It might be better to have the one with the stand down there. That was suggested. I'm sorry? Let me just get this figured out. That would go up here. Ms. Gaffney asked me to recite the list of the speakers from the last meeting who will be asking questions today. There'll be Ms. Gaffney, Ms. Briceau, Mr. Borden, Mr. Chen, Ms. Rolando, Ms. Courtney, Ms. Breakstone, Mr. Gonzalez, Ms. Young, Ms. Adorno, Ms. Palermo, Ms. Girawu, and Ms. James. I'm sorry? Well, the time doesn't start ticking until we get the applicant architect. My apologies to the board. Ms. Gaffney, a favor, please, or I guess?
Margaret Gaffney, 6600 Boulevard East. Mr. Arancivia, will you tell me for each month, what day of the month the shadows, the stills in the shadow study were taken? Or simulated, I guess, as the apartment work?
For each month, what's the say?
Like, for instance, it's May the 1st, or May the 31st, or some other day.
She asked for each month. Okay. For each month, what day of the month it was taken, unless it was taken for the whole month. If there's a specific day, that's what you would like to know, is that correct, Ms. Gaffney?
Yes.
I believe it was the middle of the month, I don't think it was any specific, one day being anywhere in, so, but-
So approximately the 15th or 16th?
Correct.
And was the time daylight time or standard time?
Well, it's, I believe it's regular, I think in May it's regular, it's extended time already, so-
No, the entire period we covered is daylight savings time. Daylight savings time now is standard-
I think I did pretty much say that, that's correct.
So, I'm sorry, you said it's daylight time?
I think daylight saving starts in November, so it's not daylight saving time at all, it's regular time.
Started in May. Daylight savings time ends in November, begins in March.
Okay, so it's in from May to September. So the same time as May to September, is that daylight savings time, is not?
That's daylight savings time, yes. And do you know the latitude and longitude that were input for your simulator?
Sure, absolutely.
Could you double want, tell me what it is?
I don't have it right in front of me, but it's the same as application.
And I believe Mr. Blaine asked for the period from March through October, and March and April are not present, is there any reason why?
I believe it was May to September, that's what I meant.
I checked the transcript, it was March.
Okay, well-
Quite frankly, I think that it was posed to me, as opposed to doing that, to just to start in May, because that's when the Versailles swimming pool season opened, and I exceeded that.
Correct, but unfortunately, our windows are going to be shaded much earlier than May.
And we can, excuse me, and we can take that into consideration.
Thank you. And for some of us, for worse, the wall is going to be much, you did not request November through February, because those are the longest shadows of the year.
Make sure you keep that type of information for comments.
And can you tell me what percentage of the pool, and by the pool, I mean not just the volume of water, but the entire sun deck as well, the deck area, is currently in sunshine at, say, 6:00 PM? That would be in shadow once the meridian hits in place?
I don't have the top list. But, look, I think he did say that from a statement, that the new building would add an hour and a half. Roughly around an hour and a half, okay, it's not a percent, now, some of it, the shadows is brought on by the Versailles, some of the shadows are also brought in by Halifax. So between the three buildings, they, I think they almost equally share, I don't, the shading on the pool itself.
I would like to double check your, particularly your latitude. Because I've lived 15 years in the Versailles and have never seen the sun set over Halifax House. I've never seen a shade more than a tiny sliver of-
Well, why don't we do it this way, why don't you provide that to our board secretary Maria Varela? And you give Maria your email address or whatever, she can provide it to you.
So what specifically did you like? Longitude and latitude, that you want?
Yes.
What else?
Emphasis on the latitude.
And you also want, what else was there something?
Could confirm that it was daylight and not standard time?
Okay.
Because the sunset is extremely early to me.
And do something else?
The next question, I'm not really sure whether it's-
I'm sorry, is that it, that's what you wanted, to start?
Well, until we find out whether my next question-
Oh, okay.
So many comments have been made about the pool being on the north rather than the south. Would you design a building that had the pool in an area where the rock is very fragile, and immediately on top of the sewage treatment building, if you had another place to put the pool?
I don't want to answer that question, it's all hypothetical.
Because that's what would happen if our pool were on the south side, the rock is not stable there.
But I don't think that-
And sewage-
No, 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 let's, no debates, no argumentative, I would, I would really keep that for public comments at the end. I understand your point, and it's not, it's not a unimportant one.
And would you agree that it's safer to put a driveway where there is the traffic signal than at an uncontrolled intersection? Again, assuming you had the choice.
How would the- I think I've seen the traffic.
I'm just going to object to the question, I'm going to do the sun stuff. Traffic signals, the safety-
That's right.
Because it determines where our pool is, the pool's on one side, the driveway is on the other. And you've made such a point about the pool being on the north side.
But I already told you, you can't answer the question, it's hypothetical, so any follow-up questions with respect to that are objectionable.
But I understand your point, let's continue.
Okay.
I think your point is that it was laid out in the safest way, in the best possible way, considering all the contingencies that were available at the time.
Correct. All right, and my other notes actually are comments.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Gaffney. Ms. Briceau?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Sydney, I just have to clarify something, attorneys, I think it would be actually the dates that they were taking was on the 21st of each month. So it wasn't the 15th, it was-
Ms. Gaffney?
I'm sorry.
The date you're looking for each month is the 21st of each month.
How's the date updated? Okay, doesn't fabricate this.
You just testified to clarify, so now you have an exact date each month, which is what you wanted.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Ms. Briceau.
Good evening, sir. Mr. Arancivia, how are you?
Good, how are you today?
Good, please. I just have one quick question for you. The data, the data for the shadow study is entered into your program, or is entered into your program in office?
I'm sorry? It's not an office program, no?
No, it's, so it's not, who does do the data entry on the program?
Well, we have it in our, we do it in our office.
Yes, that was my question. Yeah, that was my question.
Oh, I thought it was an office program, it's not an office, no, it's under office, correct.
I understand, so it's not an off-site impartial administrator?
No.
Okay, that was it.
But it's-
Thank you.
I have to talk.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Borden? Good evening, sir.
Good evening. How are you?
Good, how are you? That's good to hear.
Doug Borden, 6600 Boulevard East, apartment 12. Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you doing?
Good, so I'm asking the architect, just a couple of questions about the program that you're using. What's the name of this software program that's used in this shadow study?
Well, it's Google Maps.
It's just a Google Maps app.
It goes to SketchUp as well, too, so it's a combination of programs.
Google Maps and SketchUp? Those are the two programs, yeah.
Has SketchUp ever been used in the court of law before?
I don't know.
Has it, so, has it ever been challenged in any of your, your board applications in front of others in the zoning? Or has it ever been used?
Well, used in numerous occasions.
You have used SketchUp in other applications? Well, in my opinion, you know, this is not an adequate representation of the shadows that exist in our building. I mean, I've never seen the shadows that you're talking about from the Halifax coming onto our building. But is your contention that there's the light that is coming, do you have the software that we can show at this point, that I can clean out?
No.
Do you have the representation?
No, the running staff, sorry, I don't have that, no.
Okay, so, but is it your contention that ultimately, the building that you propose will ultimately block out any remaining light that our pool, our personal property and our pool, has to enjoy during the summer months, during the pool months? It certainly looked like that to me, not at all. You made a representation, and you don't, you didn't bring it with you to show everybody who might not have been here, and so that we can't talk about it, which is, which I think is unfair, because we can't talk about your representation across examination, and you brought it the first time.
So, don't you have the handout?
I have a handout, sir.
Yeah, he has the handout.
Okay, so what I saw was that you saw the shadows moving back and forth on the Versailles, and you saw the shadows coming in-
Mr. Borden, do you want to look at the handout?
Sure, but I wanted to, I wanted to see the light, the streaming.
Well, this is, but this is the same thing, except it's-
It's, it only has hourly, it's not, it's not a stream, it has hourly representation, and it's not act, it's not as accurate as the SketchUp or Google Maps.
I think it's exactly the same thing.
And I've looked at that, and I think, as you saw on the running program, you could see the movement of the sun around the Versailles, which we've always been able to work around with. Absolutely, we've had plenty of sun. But yours, what your, what your representation, to me, showed that it does block out a considerable amount of sun, and that will ultimately block out any sun that our personal property and our pool that we, that we own, it has to enjoy. So I really thank you for that. And I wanted to ask Ms.-
And I would just suggest you also, you also double down on that by making a comment during your public comments.
Thank you. Ms., could I speak to Mr. Suet? I'm sorry, am I pronouncing your name correctly? Suet, Suetis.
But let me just follow up with Mr. Arancivia on this.
This is the sunshadow study.
Just, it's an hour and a half extra.
Correct. On average, in one month?
But my question is, going to what Mr. Borden's asking, how much is left after that hour and a half? In other words, it seems to me, by looking at what we're talking about as the flow, that when you implant that additional hour and a half, that that does in fact take care of whatever was left of the sunshine on the pool.
No, no, I mean, and this, the study showed it, I mean, because there are windows, there's different months, different times in different months, that there's, the sun is hitting the pool, that is out. We figured out, basically, it's roughly an hour and a half that our, our shadow, from one end of the pool, when it starts hitting the pool, to all the way to the end, about an hour and a half, is at that window that the pool isn't being impacted. That's what we've done, average, about an hour and a half.
It's a, it's an hour and a half in addition to the Halifax-
And they're all the shadows, correct.
Okay. So let's say we're talking about 12 to 8.
It's typically from where I noticed, it was more in the afternoon, it was more like 2 to 3:30, roughly that time.
No, what I'm saying is, let's say we're talking about 12 to 8.
Okay.
2 to 3:30. And let's say the Versailles stuff, because of the sun takes care of 12 to 3, and let's say Halifax takes care of 4 to 8.
Probably, yes, I'm sure.
Right?
Yes, specifically.
All I'm saying is, then the meridian takes care of the remainder.
Well, there's an hour and a half to where it takes care of-
That's all, sir.
I agree, yes.
How much, how much sun does that leave the Versailles without shadow?
I didn't figure out the percentage of time that there is on the, on the pool. I just figured out the impact that our shadow has on the pool.
Yeah, but the last hearing that we had, you clearly were keying in on the fact that you see in that presentation of yours, that you show that there's shadows already existing, created by the Versailles and created by the Halifax. Is it your contention that your program shows that this building will ultimately block out a significant portion of the afternoon sun, that we as residents of the Versailles consider off in the pool, of our pool time, which is our personal property, that you don't seem to be very considerate of?
Well, it's not.
I think I already answered that.
What was the answer, sir?
An hour and a half a day.
Okay, and I thank you again for that. When, when you did this, when you did this shadow study, did you, when did you do this shadow study? May I ask? What was the date on that?
Well, when was it done in my office?
I don't have my, yeah, what, okay, when did you, when did you learn about the shadow?
The dates that we picked on the shadow study is the 21st of each month.
Okay.
That's when, that's the day we picked.
And after the, I'm sorry, let me rephrase that question. So when you completed the shadow study, did you inform anybody at the Versailles about the, or the Halifax, or the building looking at the potential, the proposed property to the left, or anybody in, on Lincoln Avenue behind it, I think it's Lincoln, Lincoln Avenue? Did you form, inform anybody of the potential impact that your building's going to have on their buildings?
Well, we sent out notices for everybody to know that we're building a, building that property to all the people within 200 feet.
Right, as a legal standard for this area. I'm talking on an informal basis, did you approach the Versailles, or anybody in the Halifax, anybody in the building to the, to standing, standing, looking forward toward the proposed property to the left, or anybody on the street behind you? Informally approach anybody and let them know about the impact that we create?
I did not do anything more than what was normally required.
Okay, so you didn't feel that it was important enough to have a working relationship with any of these, with any of these-
Mr. Borden, that's sort of a characterization, if you want to make that as a public comment, that's fine.
I just want to answer, so, so no, the answer's no, correct? There is no answer, Mr. Chairman. I'm asking if he-
Well, he said he didn't-
Be an argumentative and an objection.
Wait a minute, Mr. Borden, he said he didn't do it.
Okay.
By not doing it, there's a lot of things that flow from that.
Exactly. Thank, I want to say thank you for that again. Did you attempt to compromise with anybody at the surrounding buildings about what you're proposing to develop? Objection, it has nothing to do with the sunshadow study.
We have to, we're sticking to the sunshadow?
Could I ask the CEO the same question? Since he's the CEO of these different projects, did he have the decency to-
But this has nothing to do with the shade shadow, shade study?
Correct.
That's the only thing we're talking about now is the shade study.
Well, I'm asking it if he did, because maybe-
If he did what?
Maybe he did.
What?
If he, if he informed, informally spoke to anybody at the surrounding buildings. I think it's irrelevant, Mr.-
Regarding the shade study?
Yeah, regarding, that, once you got the results, you said, oh my God. You're going to say, oh my God, this is really going to impact my, a good neighbor would do-
Excuse me, excuse me. Mr. Arancivia, did you speak to anybody that's around the building? Mr. Suet, did you speak to anybody that's around the buildings? Okay.
Thank you both of you for being great neighbors, potential neighbors. And one last question. If a neighbor of yours was to build a fence that was going to potentially cover your pool time, or the sun for your pool time, would you want them to be notified of that? Would you- Objection, don't answer the question. No. You're a great neighbor, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Borden. Mr. Chen? Mr. Chen? C-H-E-N, Chen, Mr. Chen. Okay, Ms. Rolando? That's discouraging. Okay, well, you know what I'm going to do, I'm going to put marks by them, and if they don't delay, I'll give them the opportunity. But I'm also checking them off, as in I call them. Ms. Courtney? No, Ms. Rolando would never be late, they can't be Ms. Rolando.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, she is.
Oh, all right. I don't have it. Sorry, I don't have it. Ms. Rolando, do you want to come up now, or do you want to wait till everybody else is done?
I'm going to leave the last.
I'm sorry?
I'm going to wait till everybody else is done. Thank you so much.
Ms. Courtney? Ms. Breakstone? Save your time, all right.
Melody Breakstone, 6701, can you leave the locker? Had it passed through? Question about the software you use, Mr.? With this software, do you seemingly have to enter data such as the height of the surrounding buildings, that distance in relationship to your building?
Yeah.
The time of the day, or the sun, I'm sorry?
Why is this my phone?
So, so you did have to enter the height of the surrounding building, it's one of the-
Well, we, we based it on, basically, our building, the Halifax, and the Versailles. Those are the ones that we actually masked the buildings, so we actually see the impact on the buildings.
Okay. So for example, what was the height of the building you entered for Halifax Hall?
I don't have the information.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
The question was, what, what was the height of the building you entered for Halifax Hall?
Oh, you can give that to us. If you want, again, if you want to be in touch with Ms. Varela, Mr. Arancivia will give the information to him regarding the height that was inserted for Halifax Hall, is that correct?
Okay, maybe you don't remember the height, yes, maybe you don't remember the height that you entered, but you are going to remember where you get that, where you got that information from.
Your question is, where did you get the, not only what was the height, but where did you get the information as to what the height was?
Right.
We had a survey, and then the height, you saw the height.
Okay, so you have an exact. When you did this shadow study, did you solely do a study that would reveal the impact of Meridia's shadow on the Versailles swimming pool?
I don't understand what-
Was it, was the study solely about the impact of your building on the Versailles swimming pool?
Well, I believe primarily that, because I think that was one of the reasons why, I think, we were after the shortage of that study, was to look at the impact on the pool. So that was primarily the impact that we, that primarily looking as far as how it impacted.
But did it show impacts of other, did it show impacts of the- But did it show impacts of other, did it show impacts of the front of the Versailles, and also some of Halifax Hall, et cetera, et cetera, that's correct.
Okay, um, why was it primarily on the swimming pool?
Well.
Why, why was the study done, um, with its, with the impact of your building primarily on the swimming pool and not on the surrounding buildings? I mean, your, your, your building will be affecting an entire neighborhood with its shadow, and you, you have concentrated your study on its impact on the swimming pool, which, by the way, is going to be just for a couple of months. I mean, the rest of the neighborhood, I want to comment. The rest of the neighborhood will gonna be, uh, impacted all year long with your shadow.
Well, we did a shadow study, basically concentrating on the Versailles pool.
Why the Versailles pool and not the rest of the, of the neighborhood?
I think I had to do the fact that mostly everybody here is pretty much from the Versailles and the Halifax. We don't really have too many people here from the rest of the neighborhood. Nobody seems to be that involved, or.
That's not the question.
It's the explanation.
I understand that the chairman of the board had, uh, requested very specific dates for the study from May to September. Considering the fact that the sun during the winter time, uh, let's say from November to February, is much lower in the sky and has a shorter course, considering the fact that your building with a height of a hundred and fifty feet would be standing next to Halifax Hall, which is sixty feet, I need to answer. Um, would you agree that during those months, with the sun being so low, uh, at such a low angle, your building would be blocking us, Halifax Hall entirely, completely, from sunlight during the coldest month of the year?
I can't answer that without an actual study of those months.
But considering the facts?
But the shadows will create longer hours.
I understand you cannot, but considering those facts, that the s, the sun will be very much lower and have a shorter course, and your building being a hundred and fifty feet high next to our building, which is only much less than half of yours, we're gonna be completely in your shadow. So, would you agree that this is gonna have an impact?
I don't know if it's gonna be, in the shadow, right, or if that's the impact of the building.
Also, uh, Ms. Breakstone, I think the, uh, the parameters of your question should also be used as public comment in the title.
I understand, sorry.
No, 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 I'm not saying, I'm saying, um, keep that thought also for public comments.
I will. Thank you. That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I still have one question, somebody. Let's have an exhibit. It's a Google map photograph of, um, the area.
What is the question?
It shows, um, it's just a, in relationship of, um, it's to demonstrate where Halifax Hall sits in relationship to the Versailles swimming pool.
Is that a matter of women, is that a matter of public comment? Or do you have a question?
Uh, it's going to be a question, but I need to show you this. Okay, never mind, I'll, I'll, I'll save it for comments.
Wait a minute, okay. Thank you. Um, Mr. Gonzalez? Mr. Gonzalez? Ms. Young? Ms. Young? Ms. Adorno? Is there a Ms. Adorno here? Good evening.
Myra.
Mr. Aaron Sebia, I want you to place special attention. What are you looking at?
Myra Adorno, sixty-six hundred Kennedy Boulevard East. I'm from Nada.
Hi, Myra.
Hello.
Excuse me?
So. All right, my first question is, uh, what is the percentage of margin of error for the software used for this sun and shade study?
I wouldn't know, I'd find out from you for your side.
And why don't we do it the same way you tell, uh, that's a very good question, though. Tell Ms. Varela, and, uh, be in touch, and she'll tell you.
Absolutely.
I would also like to know that.
Was an allowance for the balconies included in the calculations used?
Yes, the entire massing was in part of the, that's how it's, again.
And in that also, did you include, um, the, the trees up on your, on the roof garden?
I don't think we masked the trees, so no, I don't think we did, the two trees.
That would be the, um, what was that covered? You have a sun, you have a shade up on the?
The canopy.
The canopy, is that?
I don't think that was, that was also modeled. That was very small, thin canopy, so it had a very negative impact, but, no, that wasn't all.
How far does the shadow from the meridian cast west of the building? A block, fifty feet, two blocks?
At what time of the year, what time of the day, uh, open, it doesn't?
We'll just stick to the dates of your, of the study.
So, what is that, I mean, I don't have that right, I can find it and I can tell you about it. You want me to mention it?
Well, no, no, um, but, okay, so you'll get back to us on?
Well, I mean, first of all, we.
He will give the information.
Here in the question, that's what I'm making sure of. What exactly are you looking for?
How much of the shade does the meridian cast west? So, far?
At the times that we have on record, at least a specific time.
Mm-hmm. Will it cover?
Directly west?
Directly west, so right behind it.
And he'll give that to Ms. Varela, and we'll be in touch. Very good.
And you'll have to forgive me, but I know you said that the meridian only covers the Versailles pool an hour and a half each day. What was that time, roughly?
Roughly, yeah, some days a little bit less, some days a little bit longer.
Okay, around what time period was that? Now, forgive me, I didn't write it down.
Around two to three thirty, that's probably the times that it pretty much came in.
Okay, now, when I was looking at the shadow study, you show, and I'll use six P M. as an example, that the Halifax covers most of the pool. Now, at the last meeting, you stated the Halifax building block was not included in your initial calculations, and the block was added after the study was completed.
No, the, the actual block was actually there. Um, what was happening was, when we were developing the whole shadow study, um, at one point we didn't have a block massed, but later on we did, and when I was looking at the original, uh, video of it, like, you didn't see the shadow, uh, on the, on the roof of the Halifax, but it actually was only because at that point in time, there was no shadow on the roof of that building. So, subsequently, went through the, the pictures in the different months, you actually saw that the shadow was actually on Halifax. So, the massing of the Halifax is there, um, so you can actually see what it actually impacts the roof of the Halifax.
So, how much of the, say at six P M., or we can use, at three P M., we use the three P M., how much of the Halifax?
Which one?
On sixty-seventh Street?
Which one?
Um, July, we'll use July. How much of the Halifax is in shadow?
July, the roof?
Not the roof, the side of the building, on sixty-seventh Street.
Um, I, I would say, roughly from what I'm looking at here, looks like half of the building, how high, I don't know.
Okay, and how much would you say in August at three P M.?
Um, I would say about two-thirds of the building, and it probably covers from the ground up. And I said two-thirds of the building, or half the same, that one face of the building.
Okay.
Not the other face, just the one.
And I know you don't know the percentage of error, but how accurate would you say this, the combination of the two software packages you use?
I would say it's over ninety-five percent, I would say.
God bless you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Palermo?
Pass.
I'm sorry?
Pass.
You passed. Ms. Gerowu? Ms. Gerowu, I believe first name is Flor. Flor Gerowu. Ms. James?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, Cheryl James, sixty-six hundred Boulevard East. Uh, just to reiterate a little bit about now, what now we were speaking about before, I just brought a few pictures to show you, Natalie Breakstone.
Oh, 'cause we don't know, I don't know first name.
I'm sorry, Natalie Breakstone. She was talking about, um, the shadows as they were cast on the buildings. And what I did is, I, I brought you a time, um, photographs. First two on the top are Halifax Wall, taken approximately noon and then very late in the afternoon. And in October, you can see it's in full sun.
Excuse me, ma'am, did you take those photographs?
Yes, I did.
And what day did you take those photographs on?
These were just, these were all taken this past Monday, they're all timestamped.
And, and they're timestamped with the time of day that they're taken?
And, and, and the time right to the second.
Okay.
Correct, yes. Now, these, the Halifax Wall is in the sun on the southern facade from noon, basically until the sun sets, which means during many, many of the months that you did your study, it's in the sun for eight, possibly ten hours. My question to you is, how much of the sun will be lost? Or is, does it have any sunlight hours at all, according to your, uh, shadow study?
I'm beginning to study in October, I can't answer that question.
No, I, I'll, I'll take your answer for July, or June, or August.
So, your question is, how much of?
How, how many sunlight hours will have the southern facade of Halifax will have?
I don't have any information. I, I could find out, but I don't have it here.
Um, it's fine, I'll, thank, thank you.
Make it clear, what exactly is he looking?
Well, we'll just take, we'll just take one month, we'll just take July, because you have your study in July.
And you want to know?
How many, how many hours will be taken away?
Or, if you could even rephrase, how many hours of sunlight will Halifax will have? Neither one. Because right now it has full sunlight.
I'm worried if I just tell you how many hours might be shadowed from our buildings have impact on that.
That's absolutely fine.
Okay?
Yes, that's fine.
And you know Ms. Varela's telephone number?
I'm sorry?
You know Ms. Varela's telephone number?
Yes.
Ma'am, would you like to mark that as an exhibit?
Yes, that would be great.
I'll do, do you remember what specific number we're up to?
Who's that?
We're up to oh five.
Oh five.
Oh five.
Oh five.
Oh five.
Shade.
Okay, can you see if you just identify the board, how many pictures and what they are, just for the record?
You want me to do that right now?
Please, just so we can identify.
Well, on the front of the board, uh, the two top pictures are the southern facade of Halifax Wall. In the center, the western facade of the Versailles. And the bottom three are, like, my particular apartment, which I, um, also showed you by the red dot on the one, just to show you some light coming in. I also have some in the back that are taken from my apartment right over your property, the proposed meridian. And you can see that by the Dino Residence as a point of reference of how much light is streaming in at different times of the day, even the evening.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The two, uh, photographs in the middle are the western facade of the Versailles. And these are the, most of the apartments that will be directly impacted if the construction of the meridian goes forward. And my question is, and we can stick to the month of July, how many hours of sunlight would we receive? Because at, right now, from early afternoon until sunset, we receive full sunlight.
That, that too. I, I'd like to rephrase both questions.
Sure.
For the benefit of the board, I think it's a lot easier. How much sunlight will be taken away?
How much sunlight, that's fine.
I would rather that, how much sun? So, you know, some of us on the board are not good at subtraction.
Okay.
So, if we're just given a number, it's how much, how many hours are taken away as opposed to having to subtract from twelve and all that stuff?
How many hours are taken away is fine. Which basically means upon that mistake.
I do, up to a certain point, because since the Versailles is so much taller, so they won't be impacting a lot of the building, so I don't like to find the area that I'm trying to.
Sir, you're gonna be impacting approximately ninety units, that's a lot.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just trying to give you the answer you want, but I, I need a definition.
Can we do that by, excuse me, can we do that by floors?
Absolutely.
Up to, up to a floor, up to the top floor, thirteen?
Well, let's go up to the, let's go up to.
That's what, that's what we just, that's what? That, what? We just agreed to. So, in other words, you're gonna give the answer of how many hours, um, of sunlight will be taken away from how many floors at the Versailles as a result of the new building?
That's fine, that's fine. And we could use the month of July at also.
How many hours, one hour?
But you know that, that moves. So, it's, it's, you know.
Right, so give us the most.
For each floor? Well, you suggested each floor, correct?
I'm, I'm just saying, because every, the sun is, you know, it's. I'm just.
Sorry.
I just want to make sure you are getting it, that's all. And since it moves, it's kind of hard to define that, pin that down.
I understand what you're saying, you're absolutely correct. However, as the shadow moves, there are going to be a majority of these units that will still be in that shadow as it moves.
Okay, so why not just give you the, the worst scenario?
That's good by me.
Okay, give you the worst scenario.
Sounds good to me. I think that's it, I'm good.
Okay.
And then I leave this here, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, let me, uh, why don't we do this right now? Why don't we start out with Ms. Rolando? If she's still here, or did she, is she still here to leave?
No.
Good evening.
Good evening. Hi, Amy Orlando, sixty-six hundred Boulevard East, West New York. So, these are the, the shadow study questions, what, uh, worth, worth sticking to only the shadow study questions, etc.? Okay, sorry, I came in late, I apologize.
Okay.
So, my first question was, I, I noticed there were not any, uh, shadow views facing the west side of the town, like, looking west. And I think that might've been covered before, but, um, again, I was late, so I apologize. So, is, there's no data for that, or images for that, any stuff?
I think Ms. Adorno would ask for that, uh, information to be given to Ms. Varela, if you also want to be in touch with Ms. Varela. What is, what are the shadows chased by the building west?
Yes, and yes, I'm sorry.
That was the answer, so if you're in touch with Ms. Varela, we'll get the same answer.
We'll go back. Okay, um.
I'm sorry.
And, Mr. Aaron Sebia, when you, um, send this information in, we should, um, send it in as a supplement, uh, Mr. Alonso, that way it becomes part of the record.
Okay, so all information will be entitled a supplement to the shade study? Et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. You can date it, I'm sorry, please continue.
Okay, so, so when you collected your, did you collect data for this? Or is this just something that a program, a software program produces? Or is this just something that a program, a software program produces the shadow effect? Like, is there any, I mean, statistical data? I'm sorry.
We got the data for the buildings, the height of the buildings and the massing, so the size of the buildings, specifically the Halifax and the Versailles and our building. We've got the data for that, being put in that. And of course, the data, we have the software that basically tells you the shadow of the sun, where it is located, based on the lighting and the lighting, so that was all inputted into the program.
Okay, and then once it tells you whatever the answer to that dimensions would be, and I'm sorry, because I'm not, it's not my trade, so I apologize if I'm using the wrong terminology, but once you, once the program renders an image, I guess, of how would shadow, do you then have the ability to edit that? Or is that like, is it like, like, does the program work like you enter a formula, like as if it's an Excel spreadsheet, where you would put in two plus two equals four and it can only equal four? Or is it the kind of thing that can be edited where you can have the ability to manipulate and redact and, you know, you know, like it was played up?
I wouldn't know how to edit it, to answer the question, but basically it's no different if you have a model and you have a map. And you follow the model along, that's basically what you're doing with the solar study, so.
So then, the way you entered the image, information for the Halifax wall, if I understood you correctly, and I'm power freezing here, so I apologize, you just dropped that image in as a box on top of the shadows that were cast in the program, is that? I'm sorry?
We had the dimension of the building and the height of the building, so we masked it into a block volume. So I was able to get to determine what the envelope of the building was. And that way, when you position sun and location where it is and moves through the day, that becomes a mass, basically when the sun hits it, it blocks and increases, you see the shadows as a result of when it hits the different parts of the building.
So are there shadows that are absent from other parts of the images as a result of the image being dropped on top of the shadow?
No.
Okay. Do you stand behind the accuracy of the study you provided?
Pretty much.
Do you stand behind the accuracy of the shadow study you provided?
Yes, pretty much. Somebody asked me what the tolerances were for the program. I don't know exactly, but I'll find out. But yes, it's, it's quite accurate.
Okay, well, I would beg to differ, and I'll tell you why. I am a resident of the Versailles, as I think you probably already know. And if I look at the month of June, image that you have from six P M to seven P M, you have a shadow at the pool at six and against the building itself at the Versailles at seven. I can tell you for a fact that I am regularly at that pool in the early evening and that I never go upstairs for dinner because the sun hasn't set before Jeopardy comes on at seven P M. So.
Is there, is there a caboose to the?
I'm disputing his.
But it has to be a question. Remember the, the caboose was the question, remember the last meeting?
I do, all too well.
As opposed to public company? At the right time?
Okay.
No, if you can rephrase that into a question, it's fine.
How did you come up with the correct, the incorrect image at the pool that I'm at, at a regular basis? If you used accurate information, is that a better question? That's a question.
I don't object to the question, because it's not an incorrect image based on the testimony by the architect.
It's an incorrect image on the testimony of reality.
So the, the answer by both the attorney and the architect is that it's not an incorrect image.
Okay. Okay. Um, so. If we go to, pick an image, June, July, anytime, there is shadow now where there currently is not as significant if this development is to be built, constructed along Boulevard East between the Versailles and the Halifax and between Versailles and your proposed development. There is shade there at, at the, presently, but not to the same degree, or not nearly.
Can you identify which image you're referring to?
Pick an image anytime, I already identified. Would you like me to pick only one, Mr. Alonso?
What's your question? I need to know what you're referring to.
Okay, let's go to June. At three P M. Everybody good? Okay. So, again, on Boulevard East, between the existing structure of Versailles, the proposed development in your, your four and the Halifax wall, there is now shade on the Boulevard more so than it's current, currently constructed. My question is not specifically about June. My question is more in connection with the fact that there is going to be significant, longer and longer period of time shadows being cast on Boulevard East, which in months other than May through September have the occasion to potentially have snow and ice build up. What study, if any, has been done about the duration of the snow and ice that might accumulate as a hazard in front of the building, on the roof of the building, on the M, on the, in the box, the big illuminated M sign? If any, I mean, has that been taken into consideration or only in the summer months?
Mr. Chairman, the testimony was previously that that's a maintenance issue and of course all snow and ice will be removed by the maintenance people.
I asked about the duration, not just who would remove it, how much longer during the day will it be in shadow?
With respect to the duration, I believe there's an ordinance in town that.
The snow and the ice that will potentially be accumulating in the inclement weather in the winter months, which are not pictured in the months that were requested.
If you can.
With, with respect to that, I believe there's an ordinance in town that the snow must be removed within twenty-four hours of the snow stopping. We would be complying with all local ordinances required to do. Obviously, for liability purposes, we don't want ice accumulated in the property. Just like any other property.
You change that question because you didn't do this study during that period.
Exactly.
Is that correct?
Exactly.
Your, your point is that there's going to be an increased danger?
Perhaps, yes, potential danger, yes.
And the response is that because of the liability involved as well as the town ordinance, that it will be adequately doubled?
Okay.
From the, from the road?
Uh, if that's your answer, if that's your answer, I'll save that for comment.
That's a good question.
Okay, if we go back to June, six P M, your study, from what image I see rendered here for what this proposed development represents, I don't see balconies on the side of sixty-seventh Street extending into the public right-of-way as has previously been testified before. Are they absent from the image?
No, they're blocked in there. You just can't see that, that scales. The balcony is only projected up, not even ten inches of foot over, so. The whole, we took the building as.
A foot and a half, I believe, was the public right-of-way, if I remember correctly, approximately.
We took the massing, including the balconies, so we, we included.
So the balcony is included in the image of this box you have going here?
Correct. The balcony is included, if you notice, there's a little section that's sort of like a block, right there, but that's all, that's all massed when we did it.
I don't know what massed means.
That became a block, that became something solid, so the balcony.
Oh, M A N S?
Yeah.
Oh. So. And what about on the sixty, sixty-sixth or sixty-fifth street side of the building? Where are the?
They're close to the, to the massing to the building itself. So in essence, what you would be getting, if we had actually cut out the balconies from the massing, you would actually be getting, what you would actually get more sunlight on the face of the Versailles. So this is considering that we closed the entire balcony. So this shows the worst-case scenario, even worse than the balcony of it.
Okay, I, it's, the image does not match up with other images provided, but, okay. Okay, that's all I got, thank you.
Thank you. Let me go back and check, there's people who may have come in late, Mr. Chin? Is Mr. Chin here? No. Um, Ms. Courtney? No. Mr. Gonzalez? No. Ms. Young? No. And Ms. Geroo? Geroo, no. Okay, at this point in time, we'll close the.
Chairman, may I just ask one quick question?
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, I just, regarding the shadow study, uh, did you, did you do any research or do you know what the impact will be of the shadows on the dozen trees that we have in our front courtyard? The significant amount of trees that we have in our own front courtyard, how will that shadow?
This will be in the Versailles courtyard?
Yes.
How do you not do a study of that? The answer is no, he doesn't know.
Understand, so.
Thank you.
You didn't take into consideration the trees that we have in our front courtyard, the shadow effect?
That was a wrong question.
Go ahead. Excuse me?
That was a wrong question.
You're right. First time you're right.
Thank you, Mr. Phil. At this point in time. Sign it.
He was supposed to come back with the hours that the signage would be illuminated?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to remind you, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Shadow Study. Yes, okay. We're now closing the, the public questions regarding the shadow study, and I'm looking, Mr. Arancibia, and you were supposed to give Mr. Varela the, the times that the signs would be lit. Is that correct, Mr. Donal?
Yes.
I'll provide that for you with everything else. Okay. At this point in time, we're going to take a break. Because, we're going to take a break. Because of forty-seven. Then we have.
The one with the star?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
We did this all.
No, only no, go on your website. They'll be right before you download the paper. You have to get the air. No, but we go to Barcelona. We love the food. We love the food. Where I found out in the last few years, we're in Barcelona again. Nobody, nobody has seen it yet. Ninety-seven people.
They have events, so.
Ninety-one. Oh, yeah. That helps. These guys. Good. I mean, these guys, they get the red. These guys are like, yeah. Yes, sir. Yeah, that could be like, dude. Liam Pumacon? Yes. Right, because he wants to win the Pumacon for his life. Want to try and win it? I'm sure he can't afford to. I couldn't fucking wait.
But you don't want them.
I have to go.
Yeah, it's good to watch.
This man?
What I'm going to have to say is, which is what I'm going to do is, I'm going to go for it.
I wish it's a little more, more of a justice situation. We talk and more into that place.
This is probably not.
And I see. I see, I see.
We're saying, I'm in Congress.
I just want to do that number fifteen. Whatever that means. I don't know. I guess, and I was just joking. My girl, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I hate that. Yeah, I thought you were talking to her.
No, I think, um, okay.
I didn't get just.
(laughing).
Thanks for coming out. We appreciate you.
That's kind of a big thank you.
Thank you.
That's, both prepared.
That's a spare. That's a spare.
You don't want to make a mistake. I think you know the best part of the question.
Hey, that's a spare.
All right.
When you, when you pull down.
Thirty-one years, I'm the victim.
Why don't we resume the hearing? How are you?
Good.
The next thing is the question by the objective attorney. After that's done, if we have time to start the public comments. And turn our people's screen down a line. I don't think so, because I'd be surprised if we get far enough along where that's necessarily appropriate. If it is, I'll tell them. All right, why don't we resume the hearing? The next portion of the hearing is the questions regarding all of the applicant's experts and the shade study by the objective attorney, Mr. Cantwell.
Good evening, pardon, good evening, Mr. Chairman, and the board.
Good evening, Mr. Cantwell.
Thank you. My name is Jeffrey Cantwell. I'm here tonight representing the Department Corporation. I have several questions. I can start with Mr. Aaron Sevier on the shade study, and then continue on to the other witnesses. I think that's the direction we've been talking.
That's fine, but did you want to make...
Yes, and before I do that, let me just place a couple of things on the record. Mr. Chairman, at the end of the last meeting, I had raised the point regarding zoning board members and membership qualifications. Between that last meeting, Wednesday afternoon, Monday or Tuesday afternoon, I emailed to you, excuse me, I emailed to the, the relevant board, C C to you, an email, C C to Mr. Boris, your counsel, C C to Mr. Alonso, two different addresses, although it appears one of them is, I haven't seen that. Several, several things. I emailed a cover with a two memorandum addressing the issue of qualification because of the completion of the required course under section twenty-three point three of the land use law. Number one, number two, I sent you a memorandum addressing the issue of the seating and sitting of a member whose term of appointment has expired. Pardon me. And then, in addition, I raised, by way of email, clarification on one of the resolutions, because I indicated one of the resolutions referred to the parking authority and not the zoning board. I asked, I sent an email, I believe, either yesterday, a report to the, excuse me, Tuesday to the clerk, is Richie, again copying all the people I just named, asking several specific questions. This Richie, very professional, very prompt, and she deserves an understanding.
Let's not go overboard.
Excuse me?
Let's not go overboard. We all know curmudgeon.
In responding, and she responded, answering the several questions, including clarifying that the resolution, excuse me, that the resolution for one of the, for one of the members was ever, and it should have been her appointment to the zoning board, not the parking authority. She accompanied that with the minutes of the appropriate meeting of permission that were adopted. And similarly, with regard to one other member, I asked a question about when the resolution of appointment was produced, and was provided, she produced that on one of the company minutes. All of those memorandum, and all of those emails, or that information, was communicated by email to you, as I said, and the people I mentioned, either Tuesday or today, some of it today. Mr. Alonso was copying on it. I printed out paper copies that I'd like to...
Mr. Cantwell, is it my understanding, to whatever objection may be included in those three to five emails...
Yes.
You wish to preserve for posterity regarding this application?
Yes, yes. I, I, I neglect to mention one other item, which was based on local requests. I had requested local financial disclosure forms required under the local government ethics law, and I would like to submit the information I received recently, board members, as part of, as an exhibit, objective to figure out what exhibit is, as part of the record in this case.
You can, I don't know, I'll leave that up to our attorney, whether that should be done or not, but you can certainly communicate it to our attorney, much like you did the other emails.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Can I just respond briefly with that? I do acknowledge receiving those couple of emails. The problem is that those emails only detain conclusions based on what Mr. Cantwell had reviewed. There was no supporting documentation, from which I can form my own conclusion, so that I can write my own, I'm not going to draw, or to object. There's at least eleven documents that I'm going to be requesting, including the identity of the board members that he was alleging, as well as copies of the responses.
This isn't hard, Mr. Alonso. All you, I think all you have to do is send a responding email to Mr. Cantwell for those documents, copy, I don't have to be copied.
Right, I just have the right to reflect that everything that was contained...
Mr. Chairman, within a day or two, I will send them to Mr. Alonso, I'll communicate with him.
I'm not sure you should do that. Why don't you wait to see what he, what he gets, as opposed to guessing what they are?
I will send him what documents he requests that I've referred to, so he can see the factual data and draw his conclusions himself.
That's fine.
We've had a good professional relationship and communication. He'll get all the stuff. I'm not, I'm not holding anything to the public record.
Since our attorney, of course, is getting paid, he would also, he also will request that after all the documents are submitted between each other, and we, and he gets all the conclusions from both attorneys, that he be permitted to address the issues raised by either Mr. Cantwell or Mr. Alonso, from the perspective of the board.
Correct.
At either the next meeting or whenever is appropriate in the future.
And at that time, we'll make a decision. If any decisions need to be made, as to any of the board members, or anything that needs to happen, or anything moving forward. I will provide Mr. Boris as well with all the underlying documentation, Mr. Chairman, and await his conclusion.
Okay, thank you very much. Why don't we continue now with questions by the objective attorney?
Mr. Aaron Sevier, let's start with the shadow study, confine it for segue purposes. Good evening, Mr. Aaron Sevier, how are you? How many, how many shadow studies of this type have you done in your career?
About half a dozen.
Half a dozen? What were the other four, what were the other five that you did, and when did you do them?
Some other projects in the area, the Hudson County area.
When?
Within the past three years or something.
So, in three years, you've done about six? Okay. And are these studies, the tasks involved in doing these studies, were these done by you personally, or were they done under your supervision by one of your colleagues, associates, or professionals?
Actually by my partner in the office.
I'm sorry?
My partner in the office.
Okay, so your partner, and I, let me be very, very specific. Your partner, who is that?
Chris Pereira.
Chris Pereira. So, your partner in the office did this, and you came back and said, I need a shadow study done according to parameters, and Chris Pereira did it and handed you the data.
No, we, we worked together on it, and we know.
Well, who did it? But who, who did it?
He did the actual inputting into the computer.
Did you do any of the inputting into the computer?
I did organize it, but I didn't do the input.
Okay. And he produced, he produced the study, correct? Okay. Those five or six studies that you produced, have you testified about them in board hearings?
Yes.
Okay. What boards have been in front of to testify about those hearings?
I believe one time was North Bergen, I believe we had another one in New York, and I think we had one in East City at one point. I think we have one in the county, Hudson County as well.
And, and of those other five or six studies over the last three or four years, how many of those did you produce as compared to Mr. Pereira or another person?
I did not.
No, so you never produced the study that is the subject of your testimony tonight, is that correct? Other, other than gathering a little bit of data, in terms of using the software and working with it?
I was involved in the putting together of information for the study.
Specifically, what do you mean by involved?
I was involved with getting the longitude, the latitude, the rotations, helping with the massing for the program, but the input was actually from a laptop.
Okay. By, by a part, and then that means the output was coming out to his computer, the input was in. He produced it, handed it to you, and said, here it is. Okay. And the, I'll call it the computer interactive presentation you showed last time, for lack of a better description, if you haven't worked for that all years, for how you described what you showed with the shadow moving across the buildings. What, what do you call that? Make my question.
It's a time lapse.
Okay, the time lapse that you put up on the computer that shows different times. Okay. Who produced that, in terms of putting it into the computer?
Well, that's part of the software.
Who produced it? Did you do that, or did Mr. Pereira?
Well, the software actually comes up with the data for that. We, he input the data for the massing.
Okay.
The software itself tracks for some, I don't know, lots of dials, and depending on the massing that will be included in our, in our design, in our build, in our building, that's what's picked up in the, in the software.
Who chose the software?
My partner.
On what basis did he choose that software package?
It's pretty easy to use, it's simple to use.
Uh-huh. Have you ever used that software?
I have not, no.
Never? And by the way, I'll voice my objection and reserve the right to cross-examine this witness on the, that video, which has been made a part of the record, shown to the board as essentially an exhibit or a demonstration, since there's several questions I have as to how the shadows flip over, I'm quite outraged to my, my disappointed objection that it wasn't produced tonight to be a subject of cross-examination of this particular witness. And I will proffer specifically to the fact, so that the board is aware, why I feel it crucial to have them bring it in to be cross-examined on that. The proffer is that, instead, I believe, that with the massing, the way the software operated, that the shadow would not cover some of the buildings that were dropped in. My recollection is, at some point during the presentation, as the shadow flipped over, it did cover some of the buildings. And I want to ask him about that, and I think I'm entitled to ask him about that. Goes to the credibility of him and, and the accuracy of his study as a, as a demonstration of evidence.
All right, let me try to do it this way. Mr. Aaron Sevier, you could set that up again in the next meeting in the chamber.
Sure.
All right, so, I'm not done.
Sorry.
But I appreciate it, thank you. Whatever questions you would have relating to that can be done at that time.
Thank you. Mr. Aaron Sevier, a few more questions if I may? With regard to running that video, I'm not going to ask you about the specifics, just with regard to running it, did you ever test run it in your office before presenting it that, the other night?
Yes.
Okay. And are you the one that test runs it, or is Mr. Pereira the one that test runs it?
We do it together.
And so, and when you practiced it in your office, you were together?
Right, we took, we checked out one of the things, that's where we were able to find out that the pool is impacted roughly an hour and a half a day, and that's what we're looking at, because there's an actual section of the program, it actually tells you the time of the day as the sun is moving, that it actually impacts, and that's where we will figure out there's about an hour and a half a day that the sun is actually, the shadow actually casts on the pool.
You keep talking about the hour and a half a day. I'd like for the record, if you could identify on each of the shots, and maybe for the, well, if you can identify, you're, you're presented as an expert. What time of day, that hour and a half, or hour and fifteen minutes, on each of the shots that you have, what time of day is, is impacted that you keep talking about an hour and a half, an hour and a half on the precise pool? What is the time of day?
It's roughly between two and three thirty.
For every one of those shots?
Roughly. Like I said, some starts a little bit later, some start a little earlier, but it's in that, it's in that window.
Okay, so your testimony is between two and three thirty, roughly, give or take, so maybe, in one of the months, it starts at one thirty, one or twenty-five, in one of the months. But what is the maximum length of time that it has an effect? Well, you've always said about an hour and a half, an hour and fifteen minutes. What's the maximum length?
I think the maximum is about one forty. I think the maximum is about one forty-five.
No, two hours, something.
I'm sorry? Do you think it's one forty-five?
It's, no, I'm sorry, it was two and a half to two.
I'm sorry?
No. It was, it was, it impacts on an hour and a half, I think it was, and then it's like, the maximum was like one hour and forty-five, fifteen minutes more.
Okay, so in no time, your testimony is in no time, that impact on the pool greater than an hour and forty-five minutes, in any time of the survey that you did?
That is correct.
Right. And, and just to be clear, your testimony is over different periods of time for the, for the time period of May through September, each date being the twenty-first in a month. The impact is about, about an hour and fifteen, hour and thirty minutes, up to an hour and forty-five, but in no time, two hours.
We can actually identify those times.
Excuse me?
We can actually identify those times based on the program, so that's for a long speaking.
Okay. By the way, I couldn't notice it, but, and this may become, you placed times, times on the paper. May I approach you? I'm sorry, Mr. Arcebia. I'm old. My eyes don't work as well as they used to. I'm sorry. And, uh, you got, Mr. Chairman, just for the record, Mr. Chairman, just for the record, I'm looking at the Meridia shadow study that Mr. Arcebia has. It's in colors, several pages long, starts with Meridia Boulevard, first page, dated twenty twenty-three, two thousand fourteen. The first one is May. And I'm going to ask Mr. Arcebia if his eyes are better than mine, if you can tell me what hour of day is depicted on page one of the, of the shadow study that he's showing. It's, 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 it's up in the corner. He's got something, month of May, and I, it says, I guess it's, it's May twenty-first, correct? What is the hour that that, that that shadow is?
I can't see. I can't see. I can't make out, it's too small.
Too small. Now, this is a replication of the video, the moving video. So on that one, tips have been based on. And by the way, if you know, whatever time it is on this, okay, so that first one doesn't have. So now we're on to the next one. I'm looking at page two. Yes, you're looking along with me. You now have the, the, the time up, way up in the, in the corner. Is that standard, daylight standard time, or, or, excuse me, is that Eastern Standard Time or Eastern Daylight Time?
Mr. Cantowitz, can I interrupt?
Yes.
Because what you're looking at is different, or can I?
I'm sorry, I'll hand it up. Yes, I'm sorry.
Yes.
And I identify what I was looking at is ten twenty, it has a bearing remark in ten twenty-three, two thousand fourteen, M A.
Mr. Arcebia, is this, is this the same report that the numbers of the board got?
Yes. We actually brought this, it's exactly the same thing, but I just brought this from the handout from the last meeting.
Oh, okay.
So it's just formatted differently, but it's exactly the same.
Formatted differently, but exactly the same.
It is.
Okay.
Here, no, we have that.
Thank you.
What were you looking, you were looking, oh, you were looking for the exact, not six AM, but six oh seven?
Well, whatever time it was.
Right, I just picked six oh seven.
Yeah. You've got a picture here that says May. It says nine five twenty-one. I assume it was May. Is this five twenty-one every year?
It would be the twenty-first, that's correct.
Whether it's this year, next year, last year, any year. Does the difference of the year make a difference, given the rotations of the sun and celestial bodies?
No.
Does, what year does this study represent?
Current year.
Okay. Does the movement of celestial bodies, including the sun and the earth, make a difference with the shadow study between this year and next year?
I think it's pretty much the same.
You think it's, do you know?
Well, I mean, since the universe is expanding, I'm sure it's incrementally a little different, but I would say you couldn't tell the difference from one year to the next decade.
So your testimony is every year is effective.
But this is the twenty-first day of every month that is shown.
That is correct.
All right, so we're talking about May, June, July, whatever. We're talking about the twenty-first of May, June, July.
That is correct.
The time, I'm going to turn to page two. I have to just go reference, it says up in the upper right-hand corner, ten twenty-three, two thousand fourteen. That's the day this, this was produced or printed out, Mr. Arcebia?
Fourth month of July.
Up in the upper right-hand corner on page two of this study, where the dates.
Just for clarification, you're looking at the handout. The board is looking at the study.
Okay.
If you want to give the members of the board.
Yes, I'm sorry, I'll give you a different.
The handout.
But I'll give you a different reference. I see a picture, date that says month of May, six AM, and right next to it, month of May, nine AM.
That's where we are.
Okay. And, and just for clarification, the two pictures are side by side. They're roughly square in shape with little upper right-hand, left-hand corner cut off. And just for description, if I'm correct, Mr. Arcebia, am I correct, describing correctly, that in the six AM, there's a shadow cast to the right of the picture by, by appears the Versailles building, and by the time nine AM arrives, the Versailles is in sunlight altogether, but there's a shadow cast over Boulevard. Am I correct in describing what I'm looking at?
The second, second?
The second, second to nine AM picture shows a sha, shows the roof of the Versailles white, I guess, is that in sunlight?
Yes.
Okay. It shows what appears to be a shadow in, in the front of the Boulevard and across Boulevard East, the road to the, to the east, to the west of the, of the Versailles.
That's what you did.
And, and it shows very, very, beginning shadow appears to be creeping onto the northerly side of the proposed building. It's a subject of the area. Am I describing that correctly?
Sure.
Okay. Good, good for orientation. Mr. Chairman, is that clear for the board members' orientation?
Yes, I think we have that.
Thank you. Okay. Nine AM and six AM are the first two pictures. Is that daylight savings time or standard time in the Eastern time zone of the United States?
I believe that's standard time, because that's from May through September.
So your, your testimony is that May through September is standard time?
His testimony is whatever it is, it is.
I'm asking what the time is that matters by an hour. So what, what, this represents standard of the year or daylight time?
This is the time that it is in the month of May.
Do you know whether the month of May in the United States and in West New York is standard time or daylight time?
I keep forgetting whether you sprinkle forward or fall back. But other than that, it's the exact same time that it is in the month of May, six AM, four nine AM, based on the current, is it standard or not?
Okay, so for example, if six AM in May is standard time, this represents that, and if six AM is, is daylight time, it represents that. Your testimony is a special building pattern, whatever it is. Okay. Very. Now. Let me turn your attention to the picture for the month of July, the pictures at, at three PM. Got it? I'm sorry. For the record, I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask them a series of questions about the picture, the shadow study for the month of July, three PM, as far as I understand, is the document. Okay. In relation to the Versailles, the proposed building, and the Halifax, where in the sky is the sun in relation, is it to the west of, 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 west of, of, of the Halifax, excuse me, west of the Halifax? Is it above the Halifax? Is it above the sun? Is it to the, in, we're going east-west, where is the sun?
It's a little southwest.
The sun is southwest. Okay. And for orientation, say north is roughly to the bottom, and south is roughly to the top. Okay. So this is southwest. Now, looking at the month of July at three PM, is it fair to say that with the location of the sun, the shadows cast by the proposed building are beginning to move toward the Versailles' front southerly sun, uh, northerly sun? Is that a fair statement as compared to twelve PM? Okay. Now, at three PM, there is no shadow whatsoever ca, shown on this depiction, cast by the proposed building on the Halifax. Is that correct?
It's on the period.
Okay. It's, it's all white, right?
Are you talking about?
The Hal, yeah, the roof of the Halifax, all white.
Oh, yes, but this is all the shadow from the buildings, so it might be touching the south face of the Halifax.
I'm not talking about the face, I'm talking about the, do you know whether this is an accurate depiction of what is occurring in July at three PM?
Yes.
So your testimony is at three PM in July, that your proposed building does not cast a shadow on the roof of the Halifax?
Yes.
And I believe you earlier testified that at that time, we were going to provide information as to whether and when we cast a shadow on the, on the southerly, southern side of the Versailles, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Now, I believe you also testified last time that the software we were using, the way the program was used, inserting the massing of the buildings, Versailles, Halifax, proposed building, that the shadow would not be shown touching the roof because the roofs were dropped, the massing blocks were just dropped in.
No, no, I had, it actually does show it. The thing is, when we're looking at the other pictures, first, is when we're actually, before we mask, we actually didn't have the masses broken, so I thought that's the one we're looking at, but yeah, actually we are, you know. What you see is exactly the mass.
Wait, 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 I can hear you.
What you see is the exact mass of the three buildings. And just, just so you know too, I, you know, we have not masked any other area. We have not masked any other buildings that would have an impact on both the Halifax and on the Versailles. All we're doing is we masked these three structures to do the study.
I, I'm just asking a real simple question. Maybe I'm not asking.
I'll put it.
I'm asking you what I think is a very simple question. And that is, does the month of July, three PM photo depict accurately the actual conditions with regard to the shadow cast by the proposed building on the roof of the Halifax? Simple question.
Yes.
It does. Okay. Now, is your testimony that, how high, do you know how high the Halifax is?
I don't have a, but I can.
You know, you know how high your building is?
Yes.
Do you know, so you can calculate the difference between rooftop height of the Halifax and your proposed, the rooftop of your proposed? Is that difference?
Yes.
Is there a shadow cast on the upper floors of the southwest corner, southeast corner of the Halifax in the July?
Say it again?
Is there a shadow cast on the highest floor of the Halifax building on the southwest, southeast corner of the building on July?
On the highest floors? I can't tell.
July three PM.
On the highest floor?
Yeah.
I can't tell from this, from this point of view.
You can't tell? Well.
It could be hitting the bottom section, hitting half the building, or it could be hitting two-thirds of the building. I can't tell how much of the shadows from the proposed building is actually impacting the south facade of the Halifax.
I can't tell. Okay. Well, from your experience in articulating and describing shadow studies, hypothetically, at three PM, in the month of July, if I showed you hypothetically buildings depicted there, and I showed you that there is a shadow along sixty, I guess that's sixty-seventh street, is there a shadow cast by the roof on sixty-seventh street in the month of July at three PM?
Yes.
Does it cover the entire sixty-seventh street?
Mr. Cantowitz, we can take a small time.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, yes, sir. Yes, I'll be happy to. I'm sorry. Whatever you name, you're the most important. Yeah. Can I do it in front of you so I don't? Mr. Arcebia, you've done a lot of these, and you're presented as an expert in presenting a shadow study. By the way, is shadow study stuck on your resume as something that you have expertise?
No, it's not.
No? Okay. As an ex, as someone with experience, you've said, can you answer whether, in your opinion, with shadow, with experience of shadow studies, whether in the month of July at three PM, a shadow is cast on the rooftop of the Halifax?
I already answered that.
Your answer is no. Okay. Can you tell me how high up the side of the southern, southern facade of the Halifax that shadow is cast at three PM?
I already answered that, too.
Don't know. Okay. Now.
Sorry. Sorry.
Let's turn to the month of July, six PM. Yes?
Okay.
Okay. Does this photo, does this photograph depict a shadow on the Halifax?
No.
No. And that's because the software was designed and presented in such a way that shadows cast would not be cast on the building, correct?
No.
Why is it that there's no shadow on the Halifax at six PM?
Because at six PM, the location of the sun changes the direction of the shade, so that it does not impact the Halifax at all.
Okay. And is there a reason the rooftop is presented in what I'll call a gray picture as compared to the white of twelve or three PM?
It's the afternoon. So what you see, the sun, for the location of the sun, you can see that part of the Versailles is covered by the shadow of the new proposed building, and part of it, because about half of it is still in the sun, so you can actually see that the face of the Versailles is very illuminated, because the sun is hitting directly on it.
Okay, so in understanding this document that is in the board's hands, when something is white, such as the rooftop of the Halifax in July three PM picture, that means there's direct sunlight shining on it, correct? I just want to understand this, so we know exactly what you presented.
There's no shadows on it.
There are no shadows. And?
And again, I'd like to just add, there's no shadows cast by any of the three structures that we've masked. There could be subsequent shadows by other buildings or structures in the area, but we didn't mask this building, so there's no shadows.
Okay. Now, let me also understand this. At six PM, the July picture at six PM, is there a way to ascertain where precisely the shadows are, since the top of the Halifax is no longer white, but rather a grayish color? How, how would I discern where the shadow is at six PM, looking at this building cast by the fire?
I think you can fairly clearly see that the shadow from our building goes over Boulevard East and covers part of the front of the Versailles. I think it's also clear to see that the Halifax, from the location of the sun, shadow cast over the entire depth of the Versailles, and basically covers almost two-thirds of the pool in shadow.
So is your testimony that at, at six PM in the month of July, the shadow runs in a northeastern, east by north, easterly direction, roughly from the northwest corner of the proposed building in a, in a line that lies just, just, just to the south of the Versailles pool?
You're going to have to ask me again.
Okay, well.
North by northwest, I don't know what.
No, we're not, we're not doing hitchhock. There's no suspense here. I'll ask you again. Please take a look at the northwest corner of the proposed building.
Northwest corner of which proposed building?
There's only one, there's only one proposed building in this case.
Northwest corner. Okay.
Do you see where that is?
Yes.
You want to put your finger on it, so we're together on this?
Right there, right there. Okay.
Now, let's look at the shadow right next to the pool, the Versailles, also again in the July six PM building. Got it? You looking at it?
Next to the pool.
Yeah, 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 you see the pool.
Not impacting the pool.
Yes, do you see the pool? Do you see the pool?
I see the pool.
The pool, the, the northerly side of the pool, the northerly sixty percent or so of the pool is in the shadow, correct?
Correct.
Okay, the southerly thirty or so percent of the pool in the 6:00 P.M. building appears to be in this picture in sunlight, correct?
Correct.
Depicted, correct? And just, just, just to the south of the pool, a line running almost parallel to the side of the pool, that, the long, the length, the long side of the pool, you see it?
Yes.
There, there appears to be a line representing a sha, the edge of shadow, correct?
Correct.
Is that line, if I extended that line from the su, from the long side of the pool, and I extended it to the back of the, to the riverside of the Versailles, you have it?
The riverside of the Versailles, okay, yes.
And then I extended that line, that edge of the shadow, does that line go right back to the northwesterly corner of the, of the proposed building? Is that, is that the edge of the shadow cast by the proposed building at 6:00 P.M.?
Yes.
Okay. Try to understand, good, now I understand this. I believe you said that you would provide the precise times that the shadow cast by your, um, building impacts the pool. You said, we went through a few minutes ago, between an hour and fifty minutes, hour and a half, up to an hour forty-five, and stuff like that. Can you, are you able here and now to precisely delineate beyond your estimation what time that is? Or can you do that more specifically using your, the video that moves, that moves not just at delineated three-hour intervals, but throughout the day? Do you able to provide that?
Not by this point.
No, subsequently, you can provide, so you can say to us, at 6:00 P.M. the shadow cast by your building, your proposed building on the pool is from, and specific times?
Yes.
Okay, great, so I don't have to go through that because you don't know that, standing here and now, thank you. You're holding yourself down, you've been presented as an expert with respect to the shadow study, correct?
Yes.
So I'm going to ask you a few hypotheticals about shadow studies and test your knowledge. What, if you can do, best you can do, what would be the shadow cast by, back up a second, it's right there. In the month of December, what would be, where would the sun be located in relation to these buildings as compared to what you said? In relation to these buildings as compared to what we talked about a few minutes ago on one of the pictures? Where, where would the sun be?
Probably low on the horizon.
Would it be more further south of the horizon? Do you know how much it would be further south?
Degree horizon?
Okay.
Degree horizon, no.
And it would be more further south, and what is the effect of a sun being more further south in the sky during, during winter months such as November, December, January, February?
It throws longer shadows.
Longer shadows. Okay, and, and, so let's do a little hypothetical question, Mr. Arasevi. It is now the month of November, November twenty-one, it's probably right before Thanksgiving, depending on the year. Could you tell me or depict for me, or describe for me and for the board, where the shadow would be at 3:00 P.M. on the twenty-first of November? And I'm going to ask you to compare, so we can compare, take a look at, say, the picture of May 3:00 P.M.
I don't think I could do that.
And why can't you do that?
Because at that time, the sunlight is so low, you might even not have a shadow because you're not having the sun at that point.
Well, do you know? Is there sunlight at 3:00 P.M. on, in November twenty, thirty, twenty-first?
Based on the fact that this is, there's actually a hill behind here, if I actually was able to figure out the hill, and superimpose the other structures that are above the hill, there probably is, probably, area is probably completely in shadow.
At 3:00 P.M. about your testimony?
I would think so.
Okay, 6:00 P.M. it's going to be dark, right, November? In December, 6:00 P.M. it's going to be dark. How about, what, what's the shadow going to be like in, um, earlier in the day, November? You said 3:00 P.M., your, your testimony is going to be dark, it's going to be no shadow.
I'm saying it quickly.
Well, do you know, have you studied?
No, I haven't.
Hypothetically, what is, what is your, your, your knowledge, background, and expertise in shadow studies and the movements of shadows in relation to the sun and buildings tell you as to where the shadow is going to be at 3:00 P.M. in the month of, excuse me, 3:00 P.M. in the month of November for this set?
Um, basically, I know pretty much whether the sun tracks, I've seen it, I've studied it, in the winter time, in the summer, in the winter time, the sun is quite south, so it throws longer shadows, so.
Well, if it throws longer shadows, doesn't it suggest then that a longer shadow will be longer across the front of the Versailles?
Yes.
Okay, so hypothetically, in response to my question, where the shadow would be in May at 3:00 P.M., hypothetically, your answer is that at 3:00 P.M. in the month of May, the shadow cast by the proposed building will, um, impact and, and fall on the westerly facade of the Versailles. Is that, is that a fair, fair, fair statement?
I would think so, yes.
So, the impact of, of this building in the month of November would be on the Versailles, whereas in the month of May, there's no impact on the west, on the westerly side of the Versailles.
It's different.
It's, well, it's different, okay, well, I'm trying, Mr. Chairman, the line in this question is because while the chair asked for a shadow study, I think it's pertinent both to test the credibility of this witness and the information to determine what the shadow is going to be like in other times of the year because they impact residents, buildings, and, and, including.
I understand.
The chair had always objected to the questions.
I, I just want to the problem, okay, okay, now, let's talk about the month, let's talk about the month of November at 1:00 P.M. Hypothetically, I'm going to ask you, what would be the effect of the sha, of the shadow cast by this proposed building on Boulevard East and on the westerly facade and front yard of the Versailles, um, at 1:00 P.M. on the month of November twenty-one?
Can I just say, why don't we just do the study for that month? We don't have to do hypotheticals. Well, I mean, if that's the case, we'll do the studies for that month.
Mr. Chair, if he can.
We can go back and forth, it's three o'clock, six o'clock, nine o'clock, ten o'clock, but, you know, if you want.
He said he's, he's an expert, so I'm testing his knowledge hypothetically, if his response is, look, I don't know, I'd have to go back, I don't want to give you answers that may not be precise, and he wants to produce a study year-round because I'm demonstrating that there is a shadow impact year-round, even though the chair had only asked for those months, this would be the pool, but it's clear that there's an impact on the front yard and on the, on the, uh, front windows and floor of the Versailles, but he's prepared to give us a shadow study year-round, that may provide additional information, no pun intended, light on the issues that we're talking about.
I understand, the one thing I don't want to do is, is open that up to further questions. Not by you, or by anyone else.
Yes, but, right, that's fine, as long as I have the opportunity to question, because he, he.
Well, it would be part of the answer, okay, let's do it this way, um, if that's going to be part of your answer to the, um, to the objection, objector, attorney's questions, that's fine, but it will be limited to that.
Yes, because, because his answer standing here now is.
And what you can do, quite frankly, if you can't do it now, you can do it at the next meeting, which is going to be November thirteenth, because that's the same meeting that you're going to have the video timeline, that you want to ask questions, attorney, well, they have to set it up.
Okay, fine, so I don't want to.
So this is going to be a twelve-month study, the months that we didn't do so far, for any certain hours?
Well, I, I did, Mr. Chairman, to be fair, the hours in terms of the paper study should be, as you indicated, six a.m. through, uh, seven p.m., yes?
Is that convenient for you, Mr. Arasevi?
And in terms, and in terms of the, uh, video.
Six a.m., six a.m. through seven p.m., and that's for whatever months were not included, which would be, I suppose, October through March, April.
Great.
October through April. And as for the video you were saying, Mr. Cantor?
No, what I was saying is, when he comes back on November thirteenth, he'll have the video of, of what I'll call the, the four winter months, and then he'll bring back his video of the spring, summer months.
You'll have a twelve-month video?
Yeah, okay, now, I'll be up in a few minutes.
His answer to that was yes.
Okay, and will he also produce a paper of, as he did here, for the six, twelve?
If you like.
Okay, yeah, you don't want, I appreciate it.
The same type of snapshots and, and copies for the board and so on. But this, this is going to be part of your answer to Mr. Cantor's question, so that's going to be the limit as to, um, as to who's going to, going to ask the questions and tell you.
Okay. Let me just clarify, Mr. Chairman, I defer to, would you like me to ask him a few more questions about this exhibit, or wait till I see the rolling, um, video and ask together, so, so that I know.
I would think you would probably be, I'm not going to give you advice, you're a practicing attorney, I'm retired. I would think it'd be better regarding how you're proceeding to, your questions, to hold your questions until you see the, the whole interview.
Yeah, that was my suggestion, that way I won't have to go back on something, or, or have it break, I can ask him all my questions on the shadow study.
Why don't we move on to another area?
Well, the limitation tonight was the shadow study questions of this expert, so. Oh, well, now it's my turn to cross-examine all their experts.
Okay.
Will you give me one more question, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
And I'm going to go over the others, thank you, Mr. Arasevi. All I ask is that you can produce a color one of those, for me, when he has a chance.
Do you have it?
I don't have it, give me, thank you. Mr. Jenny? Chairman, is Mr. Jenny here?
I don't see him.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Jenny's currently testifying in a hearing, as soon as he's done the hearing, he'll be here, but I also have Mr. McGonig, Mr. Arasevi, and Mr. Pergoy. We're ready for, of course, his answer.
Chairman, my intent was the same way the applicant had built forward the evidence from Mr. Jenny, and forward, and concluded with his plan. I was hoping it was like that, but I'll use the time I have to start with maybe Mr. Arasevi.
Thank you, I would appreciate it.
Because I'd like to.
So we don't, so we don't lose the day?
Yes, I'd like to give this, give it done.
Okay, fine.
Mr. Arasevi, I'm going to ask you some questions, if they are ones that are better directed or subject of examination, Mr. Jenny, if you'll. Just with sake of this examination, if you want to pull out a set of your, your plans, um, that are the subject of this hearing, I'll identify them as meridional Boulevard, and this, it's, the first sheet I see is T, T one hundred, and then a bunch of other T-sheets, and these are, these are plans that bear revision date of eight four fourteen. In front of it, it says, Architecture by CBA, Architecture, Alvin Arasevi.
He looks like he's having.
Mr. Arasevi, did you participate in the preparation of any of the plans that bear, um, the Jenny associate's legend in the lower, um, right-hand corner? For example, did you participate in the preparation of sheet T one hundred? T, T isn't Thomas, T one hundred?
Yes.
You did, what was your point, I'm sorry?
T one hundred.
T one hundred. That's your sheet?
Yes.
Okay, what did you do?
What did, what did I do?
What'd you do, what'd you do in comparing this? This is your sheet.
Worked with the zoning data, put the code information, we put the description of the parking lot, we did, put a rendering on the front, we enabled the building, we located on the site plan, we put a picture, you know, we identified the site, the area based on a area photograph, uh, find the scope of the work, and, uh, included the zoning tape.
Are you familiar with the zoning code of the town of West New York?
Yes.
And are you familiar with the provisions of municipal lands you saw in the state of New Jersey, presented in New Jersey statutes forty, five, D, dash, one, in sequention?
I'm, I'm familiar with the code, and I'm familiar with the zoning data, the specifics are typically more planning that they would handle that, so if that's a question, then I would, uh, hand that off to Mr. McGonig, that's.
Well, a very, very simple question, on this first sheet, T one hundred, you have beneath the, the, the box that says zoning data, you have, um, a little, a little, a little, little E, I'm sorry, little E, little C, a little D, and now you call those out as either existing non-conformity, C variants, or D variants, right? See that, and it's in a little bubble in the shape of a cloud, I just want to show, I guess, a revision from the earlier one. Yes?
Yes, I see.
Okay, did you call out the various items on that zoning data as either being existing, or C, or D variants, or was that information provided to you by someone?
That was provided either by myself, or someone in my office was preparing the, the site plan, so, in combination with.
Okay. Question, are you familiar with RSIS?
Yes, I'm not.
What's the parking, what's the parking stall standard for an RSI under RSIS?
Nine by eighteen.
And what's the parking standard for, if you're in, in West New York?
I believe it's nine by twenty, I believe it is.
How can it be, just to correct your record, it happens to be nine and a half by twenty. Let's go right through these sheets, then we'll get that. C one hundred, Carl Jenny, is that prepared by you, or did you, did you, sorry, did you supply any information to Mr. Jenny in connection with the layout plan on C one hundred?
No.
And C one fifty, same question, did you supply any information to Mr. Jenny regarding the depiction of the sheet, C one hundred bearing revision date nine seventeen?
No.
Same answer to C two hundred?
Yep.
And same answer to C three hundred?
Yes.
Same answer to C four hundred and C five hundred, yes?
Yes.
Thank you, and let's talk about A one hundred, is that yours?
Yes, sir.
Okay, let's ask you a question about A one hundred. Who provided the data for the depiction of the parking spaces on A one hundred, which for the record represents, um, I guess, the, 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 the street level of the, of the facility, is that right?
That's the access from Kennedy Boulevard.
And you prepared it, it's your office?
Yes.
Okay, anybody else help you besides people in your, professionals in your office?
No, people myself.
Excuse me?
People myself.
Okay, do you see the, um, two percent ramp up, I'm sorry, do you see the six percent ramp up in the upper right of the inside, which would be the first incline you reach when you come off of Kennedy Boulevard East?
Yes.
And continuing around, just describing, you then, is, what is, what is, what, where does the six percent ramp start and end? Because I see the arrow, but there's no back to the arrow. The, the, the words that say lower level parking, is that flat, or is that in an incline?
Low level parking, there's, there's an incline, it's a two percent.
Two percent, and how about the, where does the six percent incline start?
The six percent inclines start at the front of the entrance to the building itself.
So, it would start, where is, depict for me, where exactly is the front entrance to the building where the six percent ramp up starts?
If you looked at where the mailroom is. If you look at where the mailroom is, there's a wall on the outside that faces the street.
Yes.
Directly, coming straight up, there's a line there, that line that hooks up to the other wall on the other side, that ramp would start there.
The, the wall that's, that, 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 that forms the lower left-hand corner of the, of the diagonal hash square, correct?
It was lower, correct.
I'm saying the line that you depicted going straight up from the wall of the mailroom, past and just to the right of the, of the letter P and the word up is where, is where the six percent ramp ends.
That's correct, yeah.
How'd you come up with six percent?
We had to work on the elevations and the sections of the building in order to make sure we had the proper clearances for the cars, since we have three different levels of parking, it was, it was based on after we worked on different sections, and we determined that six percent was the percent that we needed there to make sure we had actual clearances, good clearances.
Is the parking space directly to the, I'll say the north, north is up on this picture, correct, more or less?
More or less.
More or less. Is the, are the spaces along the nor, along the sixty-seventh street side of this building on an incline?
He, there are a two percent incline.
How about, how about the, 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 how about the first space next to the valet parking? Is that on a six percent or a two percent?
That would be on a six percent.
That's a six percent. And what is, what is the basis for having a space on a six percent ramp?
Again, it was determined that we needed more the heights to accommodate the other floors, structures of the parking, the floors.
Is there, are there any engineers in your office?
No.
No licensed engineers in your office?
That's correct.
So what, did you rely on any reference material, documents, standard, or anything else to produce a parking space on a six percent incline?
We coordinated with our traffic consultants and other engineers that we deal with, our MEB engineers, who are also involved in all of these, so yes, we coordinated with everyone else that was involved in the project.
Oh, so, so this was not done solely and only by people in your office, you consulted with other people on this project to produce this computer paper?
For the parking and situations like that, yes. We consulted with all of our consultants during the course of developing, instead of drawing some plans, because they're all related, nothing is, is not strictly architecture, it's not strictly mechanical, it's not strictly, so everything has to work in unison, so during the course of development and drawings, you have to coordinate with all the professionals in order to come up with one.
Okay. So the first space next to valet parking is on a six percent ramp, correct? The space immediately to its left is depicted here, eight by seventeen. What, what is its, what is its incline?
It's a little bit, six and then it tapers up, so it's on a little slope.
And, 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 and does it end at two percent? Where, where does the two percent ramp end?
Basically where you see the wall back of the mailroom.
That's the two, that, 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 that line immediately to the left of the number six is where the two percent ramp ends. And, and so that, your testimony is that the second space away from the valet parking going to the rear of the building is
Part of it will be six.
Part of it's six and part of it's two. Have you ever, have you ever seen parking space depicted with six percent and a two percent ramp together in the same space?
Seen it?
Yeah.
On a plan?
Yeah.
Or, on a plan?
Have you ever visualized in any of your field studies as to what a space with six percent and two percent looks like?
I, yeah, sure.
Where?
When we did the sections with the parking area, we knew exactly what the two percent slope and six percent slope was.
Not my question, I'll ask it again. Have you ever physically, actually seen, in your experience as an architect, a space part of which is a six percent slope and part of which is at a two percent slope in a parking garage?
I have not.
Never? Never seen it? Now, that two percent ramp up, where does the two percent end? Going, going towards the rear of the building, you have an arrow, I know it starts, it starts just to the left of the number six where you said six percent. How far does two percent go in this picture? Where does two percent go to?
Two percent goes to the back of what we showed columns named by the parking space, and you see the line going directly straight up and it dies against another column on the other side.
So it's roughly the line that lies below the small T in sixty-seventh street at, on the top of the sheet. If I took a, if we were to do a straight line down from the T of sixty-seven, the TH, it would go through that column separating the eight by seventeen and the seven by seventeen space, and then continue along that line, that's where the two percent ramp ends.
That's correct.
Okay. Now, on the left side of that ramp, so we've got now what the two percent is, on the left side of that ramp, what is the, excuse me, on the left side of that line that we've now depicted, what is the ramp in that square bearing the number plus one hundred seventy-five zero zero?
That's the transition area.
What's the slope?
Because it goes from a two percent to a four and a half percent.
Depict for me the transition. Is it curved up or down? I mean, am I on a race? What, what, what would I, what would I feel? Where does the slope, which way does the slope end, down, out, or don't?
It's, it's sloping up, because it's going ramping up, so basically it's sloping, part of the slope will be a little bit smoother, the farther more steeper. But it's a transition in the slope.
And is there a slope, let's say, smack the middle where the number seven, where the number five is, and that one seventy-five, what's the slope right there, right?
It would be somewhere near like four and a half.
Am I correct that all of the other parking spaces along sixty-seventh street, except for the valet parking at the six percent and that split space that was two and six percent? Am I correct that all the remaining spaces along that line are at a two percent incline similar to the slope of the, of the, of the ramp?
The parking, or if it's a two, two percent ramp, the parking there is a two percent, if it's a four and a half percent ramp, the parking is a four and a half.
Okay. But, thank you, I appreciate the answer, we'll go real fast because I want to relate this, but all the parking spaces on sixty-seventh street side, total or utility, that, that are on the northerly most side of the building, except for the, the two closest to the valet, those are all two percent slope, those are all spaces on a two percent ramp?
With the exception of the ones where we have that transition space.
Well, what, okay, those are the last three, the last three in the corner.
Those will also be on a slight slope.
Do you have any idea what the slope is for those three spaces sized seven by seventeen, eight by seventeen, and eight by seventeen in the northwest corner of the, of this building and this parking, uh, side?
Again, it'll be somewhere between two percent and four and a half percent.
You don't know, you don't, by the way, have you ever, again, in your site visits and travels around looking at buildings, have you ever seen a parking space that has a dual slope on it in a parking garage?
Uh-huh.
Where?
Monster University.
Inside the parking garage, there are spaces that
Red Hawk Deck, Red Hawk Deck.
Red Hawk Deck?
Yes.
Say, spaces have two different slopes?
Yes.
Do you know what the percentage slopes are?
I do not know.
You know if they're comparable to these?
I do not know.
All of the spaces, let's, let's keep going. All of the spaces along the easterly, excuse me, westerly most side of this, of this parking deck, starting from the utilities, well, what are the, what are the, um, where, where does the four percent, four and a half percent ramp start? At the line that says twenty-two and a half?
Pretty much, yes.
Well, yes or no?
Yes.
Is that exactly where it's now, four percent?
Again, it's a drawing, but yes, the, the plot was going to be.
You drew it, so give me an answer.
Yes, where?
It starts at, where the twenty-two, where it starts, okay. So you'll go from something less than four and a half percent on a wider twenty-four wide aisle, and you go into twenty-two percent as soon as you hit four and a half percent, is that correct?
Correct.
Now, the spaces, the three spaces sitting south of the utilities square, spaces C, 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 I got that right? And those are designated as compact spaces?
On your section of the outside.
In the far left-hand corner rear of the building
Northwest?
Northwest.
Okay.
First three spaces are on a very leaking climb between two and two and twenty-one percent, correct?
Correct.
And those three spaces are designated as compact, correct?
Correct.
What is the, do you know whether Western New York has a size designation for compact cars in its parking?
I do not know.
Do you know whether RSIS has a size designation for compact cars?
Yes, it does.
And what is its designation?
I believe it's seven and a half by fifteen.
Okay. Now, all of the spaces going forward from that hole till the rear of the building are four and a half percent, or do we do the same thing with the, with the down ramp coming in at some point on the southerly side on the, on the?
All of the spaces, where?
I'm looking at the four and a half percent ramp.
Okay.
You said the four and a half percent incline starts at the, at the number twenty-two.
That's correct.
With the lining, and it continues to the southerly side of the building in this parking.
That's correct.
Correct? Where is the apex of that ramp?
The apex of?
Four and a half percent ramp?
The entire, the entire parking structures of that, so which ramp are you referring?
Where is the apex of the four and a half percent ramp up?
It would be at the, where the column is, if you look at the column of parking space, eight seventeen, going straight across, hitting the stairs on the hillside.
So in other words, four and a half ramp continues to a line roughly that would run through or just above the word fifty cars, right?
Yes.
At that point, what happens to the ramp as it respective the incline?
Again, you have the same transition corner as you do on the other end. They also move four and a half to a two percent.
And where on the, on the aisle going out does the two percent, full two percent incline begin?
It would be the same as you have on the end, so at the end of that column, right, it's great now, so that would be the
I'm sorry, so would it be somewhere if I took a line beneath the left elevator that I see in the lobby, the left side of the left elevator, if I run it through that station between those two eight by seventeen parking spaces, and run it straight down to probably just to the left of the G and word one hundred and sixty parking? Is that about right? Where, where, where the four percent begins and the transition ends?
G, G parking.
You see the, the word park, one hundred and sixty parking spaces on your line? Okay. I'm trying to find out where the two percent incline starts.
If you look at where we have the transition on the entrance ramp from the two percent that we discussed earlier, on the north side of the building.
Right. So rather, if I draw a line roughly through, through the letter V in, in HC van, and through the letter A inaccessible.
There are lines, there are lines with that.
If I, if I drew a line straight through from, from the station down into the B, across the A, into the P, into the C, and then through the E in apartments, I'd roughly find out where the transition in that corner ends, and we begin to go down from four and a half percent to two percent.
That's right.
And where, so where does the two percent begin? Where do I finally hit two percent? Is that it?
At that point.
Right, right there I hit two percent? So where, where's, where's the four and a half begin? Where, where's the apex? Where's the apex of four and a half percent?
It goes from the four and a half percent, it goes from the four and a half percent by the stairs we discussed earlier, that dies of the stairs. At that point, that would be your apex, and you're dropping down to the two percent.
So the apex of four and a half percent is roughly at a point just above the A on the word fifty cars. The A is the word cars, where it says fifty, that's the apex.
Correct.
And then it starts coming down.
That's correct.
And, and, and it hits two percent literally in that little width of twenty-two feet. You, you go from four and a half percent to two percent in twenty-two feet.
Correct.
What reference did you use to create a transition in twenty and a half, in, in, in twenty-two feet of four and a half percent?
Reference?
Yeah.
It was basically through consultation with our traffic consultant and regular standards that are, are here, we had no, there's not really a steep difference between a four and a half and two percent, so it's very minor.
And, and, and this is just, it's going to come out of left field, but you can help me because you do this all the time. The elevation you're showing under the number fifty cars is one hundred and seventy-three feet, right?
Yes.
Okay. And that's pretty close to the apex of this parking garage, right?
Yes.
And that's one hundred and seventy-three feet above sea level, right?
Yes.
Now, follow me to a point just beyond your parking garage. Do you see the line that says seventeen feet two inches as it thinks of the parking garage?
On the, on the
I'm sorry, yeah. Do you see the word landscaping on there?
Yes.
Run your eye a little bit to the left. Do you see an elevation of one hundred and seventy-four thirty?
Yes.
Okay, is one hundred and seventy-four thirty more or less than one hundred and seventy-three?
More.
Okay. Are we going down from the apex at one hundred and seventy-three out towards Kennedy Boulevard?
Yes, you're actually higher at that point than you're probably going down.
Okay, so, help me out here. I've, I've driven around, I've come into the, I've come into the sixty-seventh street side of the lot. My car is all the way around next to the management office. Hypothetically.
Okay.
I drive in it, I drive in and at a point just to the left of the one hundred and seventy-seven square elevation sign, I start going up six percent. Right?
It starts going down six percent.
I'm coming in.
Look at the direction of the arrow.
I'm coming in.
But it's ramping up this way, which means that you're going down.
It's going, it's ramping which way? It's ramping
Look at, look at the arrow.
Yeah.
On the drawing.
Yeah.
See the word says two percent ramp?
No, I'm looking, I'm, I'm looking at the six percent ramp. The first thing I do when I drive in is I see a six percent ramp.
Correct.
That six percent ramp, I'm driving in, is my car going up or down?
Down.
Why is the arrow six percent pointing this way up?
The arrow is pointing out.
Yes, it's pointing out.
So it's pointing up, so it's going up, so I'm at, I'm at one seventy-seven, and the arrow's pointing up, that means I'm going down.
Okay, so you come in and then you go down. Okay, you're at a higher elevation of one seventy-seven, you come down. Okay, I go through this, I keep going down, right? Because you now have, you have, you now have a point going going down. Simple question, why does the six percent face this way? Why does it face out? I'm going, when I come in, I'm going to be, I'm going to be going down? When I come into the driveway, I'm heading down? Okay. And I get to the corner where it's one seventy-five, and I, I've driven down. Now I go across, am I still going down or? Okay, so I'm going from one seventy-five
Just look at the, look at the location of the arrow.
Yeah, yeah.
It shows, it's ramping up and ramping up in that direction.
Okay, and then when I finally get to the, to the, to the corner where it says one seventy-three, then I'm going to start going up, is that the point?
Look, again, look at the arrow, okay, the ramp. So you can see basically it's going down in that direction.
Right, but if I'm driving, I'm driving in a count, in a counterclockwise way. I'm going to go down, and then I'm going to go further down, then I'm going to come up.
Correct.
Okay. Now, all of the spaces all around are all in the ramp, correct? These are all ramp spaces?
That is correct.
This is not an express ramp as is known in the literature? Have you ever heard the term express ramp in the literature of parking garages?
Uh, no.
No. True that every single space on this level is on a, is on an incline?
Yes.
What is the, you're showing one handicap space where? Eight by, eight by eighteen?
You're showing three handicap spaces.
Oh, I'm sorry, one handicap van and three, okay. What is the, um, what's the slope of the handicap space adjacent to the mailroom?
The false slope?
Yeah, two percent? We immediately went from six to two? I thought there was a transition.
No, at that point, it's a two percent, at that point not.
Okay, so between six and two, there's no transition?
Well, it starts at six and it drops to a two, so that, at that point, that's where we show that line there?
Simple, real simple civil engineering.
Yes.
Is there any, what is the slope of the eight by eighteen handicap accessible space in the, in the mailroom? What's the slope of that space? What is the slope of the parking aisle immediately in front of that space?
Two percent.
Okay, that is to say then that at the edge of that space, as soon as I pull out, he's at two percent, correct?
Correct.
And immediately, literally an inch to the right, the slope is six percent, correct? Okay. Okay. And all three of those spaces are all at, 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 um, at two percent?
That's correct.
So that whole area that's called lower level is two percent? There's no transition, you go from six to two immediately?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Um, am I correct in reading that the width of the aisle on the that's the southerly side from lower level is twenty-one feet eight inches? How about that? Look at the words lower level.
For a major
Look at the words lower level parking. Do you, see, do you see a line going vertically just to the right in the word parking?
Yes.
Do you see a measurement called out in twenty-one feet eight inches?
Yes.
Does that represent the width of the aisle at that point?
Yes.
Okay, and the width of the aisle then narrows as you exit seventeen feet two inches, correct?
Yes, not only at the entrance. The house maintains the same width, it's only at the entrance.
Right, so, so the width of that aisle, that's called lower level parking with the two percent downward, the width of that whole aisle all the way back to the space just above the word van is the twenty-one eight?
It's twenty-one eight, well, for the exception of beyond the last parking space, where the double-loaded parking entrance, and it actually widens out another, uh, part of course, it's got to over twenty-two and a half feet at that point. Because the last, the dimension that we have, there's a worst-case scenario, that's what we're showing there. So what you're seeing is there's basically, that's the, the point of the column, so at that point.
Yep.
But from there on, after that last column, after stopping in a double-loaded parking area, then that kicks back, that wall kicks back, so it's probably about two and two and a half feet at that point.
I'm, I'm sorry, the lab, you're speaking about the last space in the corner?
Did you notice, if you go on the ramp, you have cars on both sides?
Yes.
That's double-loaded?
Yes.
So, at the end of the last parking, when it stops being a double-loaded parking area.
Yes.
At that point, it widens back out, so the wall of the actual lobby, you notice it kicks back in, so it's actually a little bit wider at that, in that section going up to the, yeah.
Okay, but, but, let, let's be, let's be very pedantic about it. The space immediately below the word lobby, eight, what's called out is eight by seventeen, right? See the word lobby?
Yes.
There's a space, run your, run your finger down toward the, a bit of space, eight by seventeen, correct?
Yes.
And that space, that space along with the five spaces next to it for a total of six spaces, those are all double-loaded with spaces opposite, correct?
Correct.
And those spaces are all called out for an aisle of twenty-one eight, correct?
Yes.
Okay, all of them are just stopped, now, the entrance is less than seventeen-two, correct? Because the seventeen-two of marking appears to be wider than your entrance, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, what's the width of the entrance?
I believe it has to be fifteen feet.
And what's the slop, is there a slope or the, where does the two percent downslope end as you go out?
As you, as you vacate the building itself.
So the two percent slope continues all the way till you vacate the building?
That's correct.
Okay, to the line just to the left of seventeen, seventeen-two.
That's correct.
And what, and you don't, I'm sorry, do you know the width of the, of the exit?
It's probably fifteen feet.
Well, okay. May I turn your attention to A one ten? If I ask you the same series of questions, I'm putting you this way, strike that. Um, did you prepare this, or was this prepared under your, your, your supervision, Mr. Russi?
Yes, from Bob.
Did you consult with others outside of your office in preparing this? We did, the, the proposed second floor parking plan, level two and level three, shown on A one ten.
Parking layout was done in conjunction with our traffic consultant.
I'm sorry?
The parking layout was done in conjunction with our traffic consultant.
Okay, so let's ask a few questions about A one ten. Which pair is a revision date of eight four four, correct?
Yes.
And that, and I've got the right plan as the subject of, of, of your proposed, your, your plan is proposed, right?
I'm.
Okay, no, I don't wanna go through serious questions, we told everyone, everyone. Yeah, let's look at the proposed second floor if I could. Where, you, you come in, and, and, and this ramp for the second floor lies just a little bit to the west of the ramp for the third floor, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, we'll get to the third floor in a moment, okay? I come home for a day, hypothetically, I come home from a day at work, I drive east on sixty-seventh street in order to turn into the second floor parking lot, correct?
That's correct.
Make a right turn in, correct? Yes?
Yes.
And where does the six percent ramp up slope begin?
At the entrance, on the door.
And that would be the line immediately below the number one eighty-eight point zero zero?
That is correct.
Okay, and how far does that six percent ramp up go? And now I'm driving up, right?
Correct.
Going up, so that ramp is a six percent in ramp, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and all the spaces to the side of it, on the west-ly side are on the six percent ramp, correct?
Correct.
Not double-loaded, correct?
Not the entrance.
Okay, and where does the six percent incline end, or does it end?
It doesn't end.
It doesn't end, so it continues all the way through?
Yes.
At six percent?
Yes.
Okay, and, and am I, am I accurate in saying that all of the spaces?
Sorry, no, I'm sorry, no, it's, it's actually slapping down on.
I'm sorry, where does the six percent end?
Did you notice the first column, you see the fourteen percent ramp up adjacent to this?
Yes.
The rest is a little bit of a liner, horizontal liner.
Just above the number one hundred and eighty-seven?
Correct.
Okay, the six percent ramp ends right there.
That's correct.
And what happens when you continue in the garage past the six percent up ramp and that way through that line? Flat out, does it flat out immediately, or it lays down?
Flat out.
Flat out, so, so if I'm standing on the word one hundred and eighty-seven, I'm on flat ground?
Yes.
Is the rest, is the rest, is the remainder of the aisle flat?
Yes.
And all the parking spaces adjacent to this aisle are all flat?
Yes.
And I see you called out a trash compactor area. Do you see that down on the?
Mm-hmm.
Next to the handicap spaces?
Yes.
Now. The handicapped persons are expected to share the hash marked five, what, five-foot wide areas there?
I'm sorry?
The handicapped people are expected to share the hash marked areas there, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so if I am a handicapped person and I'm driving my car, okay? And I'm coming into the space, the leftmost handicap space, and I get out, there's no hash marked area, I'm right next to the eight by seventeen foot space, correct?
Yes.
So I'm a driver, a handicapped sufferer, from whatever I'm suffering from, I have to go space for you to step out.
You asked me this different question.
I'm sorry, I'll ask you this way, I'm a handicapped driver, I drive in, and my, the space I'm getting is handicap space, parking space, the one that's the, the, uh, west-ly most side of this parking garage, the three spaces. Drive in, right? Um, I'm literally next to the next parking space, correct?
That's correct.
How many, how much space is between my space and the eight by seventeen space?
None.
None? Excuse me? It's a chase, so if I drive into my space, how do I get out, I'm a handicapped?
You have a five-foot space, the handicapped spot, you have an eight-foot space and a five-foot space adjacent to that. So if you want to fully car speed in, that's, that's not.
Otherwise I use the five.
Or you could just go further beyond and then back into, use the five-foot space.
So let's say I, I'm not so good and I park and I use more than five-foot space, okay? The next guy, um, my friend's also handicapped and he has a space next to him, where's he parked?
He should park in his spot, he's just like, he should park in his spot.
Okay, but I now use part of the hashed area, the handicapped space.
He shouldn't.
What, I shouldn't?
It can happen.
Okay, but, so I shouldn't, so I should be able to park as a handicapped person in the eight-foot wide space?
We have the space provided that is required by law.
Because you're only showing two hashes for three spaces?
We have the space that's required.
That's your position?
We have the space that's required.
Your position is that this depiction of two hashes for three spaces is satisfied, well, that's fine. We'll move on, trash compactor, it's right next to it, correct?
Correct.
Am I correct to say that the trash compactor for this level will be reached by a garbage van or a scavenger person parking somewhere at the sixty-seventh street side of the building, out on the street, and then walking in the length of this ramp, turning left, walking the length of the other side of the ramp, reaching the trash compactor area, and then wheeling out that cart in the same way he came in?
That's the correct assumption.
Okay, and he's gonna wheel it down that six-foot ramp, right?
Six percent.
Six percent, I'm sorry, he's gonna wheel it down that six percent ramp.
Yes.
Okay, and, um, how large is the trash compactor, if you know?
The container?
Yeah, I know, the thing that he's gonna be wheeling.
It's a three yard.
Excuse me?
Three yard.
How many wa, how many wide?
About four feet by about maybe thirty-two inches. By about four foot high.
Four foot high, is it on wheels or something?
Some wheels, yeah.
So it's four foot high, but, fine. What, you didn't, I, I don't see this, you didn't call out, what is the width of the aisle opposite the handicap spaces? If you know?
Can somebody give an impression?
Yes, I'll check in a second. Let's say about twenty-one feet.
Twenty-one feet?
Good question.
Thank you. Is there any way to get an exact figure of a man you're presenting, seeking up on this floor, on this board? Now, continuing along, I see an indoor dog park, yes?
Yes.
Okay, and that indoor dog park is only on the, this level. What goes on in an indoor dog park?
From my understanding, this is basically a place where the tenants have a location where they go and take their dogs out to just play with them, just to kinda like exercise a little bit of.
What's, how big is that? Estimate, estimate this word feet.
Um, estimate it about, I would say about two hundred and eighty square feet.
Sixteen by sixteen, roughly?
Roughly.
Roughly, and how do you get there?
Through the parking.
What's the, what, what, what is represented by the hash mark of the left of the dog park?
Basically, like a walking areas, and you walk into the space from that hash mark area, that's what needs to the door, and then, it's sort of like a, an area, so you basically have, you have the door, another door comes inside, another door comes in, it's like, sort of like a double door, kind of thing, security for dogs don't just get on each other, type of.
Okay, I, I, just so we understand, so the tenants living in the, in the Marilla Boulevard will have access to this dog park by path? How do you get there?
From the, you take the elevator to the lobby of this particular floor, you walk out through the doors, you walk through the aisleway, and then you walk into the indoor dog park. It's a, it's an amenity for the residents, so it's an existing dog park right across the street from this area.
Is there any, is there any, um, depiction of a pedestrian path for one who is coming with a dog to get from the lobby to the dog park?
There's no defined, uh, path, no.
And is there any defined time in this dog park that's available?
That would be a management issue.
Do you, can you sit here and testify as to when the time for this dog park is available?
No, I cannot.
So you can't rule out that people are gonna be, who are not working, days off, might be walking their dogs either morning rush hours or evening rush hours?
That is correct.
No. And is it also possible, conceivable, in your opinion, if you know, that someone may come in off the street after taking a walk with his dog or her dog, and may come in off the street and up the six percent ramp and walk all the way around to get to the dog park? Not coming through the lobby?
Your question was, was it possible?
Yeah, conceivable.
It's conceivable, however, the security system ought to have an ability to be a little difficult to do, but.
What does that mean? Why, why is it?
Because they have key fobs and the whole thing, they're very secure building, open ready buildings.
You mean to get into the garage?
Get into the garage and see the building itself.
But it's conceivable, somebody walks, his dog takes his key fob instead of driving, and he walks in with his dog.
Yes, conceivable.
And he walks in, walks all the way through about two-thirds of the parking garage, and it's the dog, the dog park.
Yes, I can.
Yes, okay, and I see different sizes of compact spaces, for example, on, on the second floor plan, close to a box that's called trans, F, I assume that's transformer?
That's correct.
I see two spaces with a C called out as a compact, am I correct with that?
Yes.
Eight by fifteen each?
Yes.
And opposite, I see another compact called out eight by sixteen. What is, what is a compact space, in your mind?
It's, I would say anything that's under nine by eighteen, or that's probably considered a compact space.
And let's go on to bicycle storage. How do you get to bicycle storage? Where's the door for bicycle storage?
There is no door.
How do you get in?
There is no getting in, it's an open space. There's bicycle racks on the floor.
Isn't that up in the air? That's a, that's a street level?
That's on the floor.
No, no, is it a street level?
The bicycle rack?
Yeah.
It's on the parking floor.
Is the, is this parking floor at street level?
This parking floor, the bus stop.
Okay, so my simple question is, how do you get in to get to bicycle? If I, if I want a bicycle tomorrow morning from Marilla, this were built, how would I, I come down from my, my story apartment? Unit, how do I get to the bicycle?
You walk out the lobby.
Well, I'm sorry, I get, just tell me, get on the elevator or go to the lobby and then?
Correct.
Then what do I do?
You walk toward the bicycle door.
So I walk out, on the, on the space towards Kennedy Door Park, I make a left turn, I walk all the way to bicycle. And how do I get in there, is there a door, or just kinda walk in right next to the last compact space?
Correct, there's no door.
Okay, and how do I get out on my bicycle? Then what do I do?
You walk your bike out.
I'm sorry?
You walk your bike out of the space.
I get on my bicycle and I walk my bike all the way out where, to the lobby?
However you wanna do it.
Okay, is it possible that I might walk my bike all the way out the length of this parking aisle, all the way around out to sixty-seventh street?
Absolutely.
Are there any markings directing where a bicyclist, either coming or going in, should do his bicycle walking inside this garage?
No.
And is there any prohibition about riding my bicycle in the garage?
That's a management issue.
Is it conceivable that someone with a bicycle would ride his bicycle out particularly as he approaches the six percent ramp, even the parking school?
Yes, it's conceivable.
Okay, thank you. Is there any wall to this structure, or this is open next to the two spaces that are jointed on the south and west-ly sides of the area?
There is no wall.
No. I'll go back, what is the demarcation that, what, what, what is the, what is the basis that you use to determine that a, a, a compact space could be seven by seventeen, excuse me, eight by fifteen?
I'll leave that question to the traffic consultant.
Was this plan prepared with consultation with the traffic consultant in size of these spaces?
This plan's prepared in conjunction with them, yes.
So I, it is fair to say that he will be able to tell me, that he told you, you could put a seven by seventeen space and an eight by sixteen space and two eight, eight by fifteen spaces on this floor?
We would have, he could tell you, we had conversations, far as where to locate and how to.
Get to it later, thank you. Same thing with the handicap space, the eight by eighteen size?
Yes.
Let's go over to let's go look at the third floor for a little bit. I'm now looking at proposed third floor plan, parking level A one ten, yes?
Yes.
Okay, okay, um, I, I come, I, and it is correct, is it not? I, I, and it is correct, is it not, that I enter this space, this area, this third-floor plan, or this third-floor parking level from Sixty-seventh Street through a entrance and ramp that lies just to the east off of Sixty-seventh Street from the six, from the entrance ramp into the second floor, correct? And I'm looking at the left picture of the second floor, because that depicts the ramp in, correct? Yes?
The left picture?
The left picture of showing the second floor plan depicts the ramp into the third floor, correct, off the street?
Correct, into the second floor.
Yes. Well, it depicts both ramps, it depicts the ramp into the second floor, it depicts the ramp area going into the third floor.
Correct, I thought you were talking about going to the left.
No, no, I'm now talking about the third floor plan. But to be clear for everybody, the third floor plan is the depiction on the right-hand side of A one ten, and it includes the ramp area up from the street into the third level floor that's shown in the middle, more or less, of the second floor.
That's correct.
But, okay, so let's take our drive in, please. I enter, and the width of that space is, the entrance is eighteen feet wide, correct, the third floor?
The opening of the doorway, yes.
Yes, but the entire, how, when you come off the street, I see a line that says eighteen feet zero inches for the width of the ramp into the third floor, correct?
Correct.
Okay. How, what is, how, how do... When does that eighteen-foot-wide area widen a little?
Right up until you pass the entrance.
And where, precisely exactly where, does it widen, at the number one eighty-four point five, does it widen, or is it that, where does it widen? Does it widen where you called out twenty-two foot?
It widens basically behind, behind the entrance wall.
Okay, so, so literally, though, coming off the street, both for the second floor and the third floor ramp, it's an eighteen-foot-wide, wide entry, entry, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And then it widen. Now, where does the six percent ramp up to the third floor begin as we come off of Sixty-seventh Street? I see the arrow, I see it, you're gonna be going up. Where do I start to go up as I come off of Sixty-seventh Street into the, into the third floor?
Correct, and the end, by the walk, the entrance, the inside, inside exterior walk.
Is that the line just below the word, the number one hundred and eighty-four point five, or the line just above one hundred and eighty-four point five? Please help.
Just below one hundred and eighty-four.
Okay, so the six percent ramp incline starts in the line that runs right through the right side of the, of the letter U for the word R period up. Correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Now... It's flat when you get there, right, off the street?
Well, sloping sidewalks, so it's not quite flat.
What is the, and how far in does the six percent ramp go when you come in off of Sixty-seventh Street and access the third floor?
I'd say roughly, roughly about eight feet.
Eight feet, okay, so I've gone eight feet, and it goes roughly eight feet, which is the dotted line going across the ramp just to the left of the number six and six percent, correct?
Correct.
And I'm sorry for being so dandy, but I want to record to be clear, so everyone understands, visualize it, look at it. So I go, how many feet did you say, roughly, eight feet?
Roughly eight, yeah.
About the width of the space?
Yeah.
And then I go from there, what is then the incline of the ramp after I've gone eight feet?
Fourteen percent.
Fourteen percent, okay. So starting from the dotted line, I then go up fourteen percent to a point depicted on the second floor plan that ends right at a line, uh... Right at a line next to the word utilities.
The ramp is fifty... I'm sorry, probably, probably, you should probably look at the poster floor plan?
Okay, so the fourteen...
Because that really shows clearly where the ramp is, so...
But if we, if we were to overlay the third level on the second level, the six per, the fourteen percent starts, you know, on the, on the Sixty-seventh Street side, continues up, and now I'm looking at the right side picture of the third plan, to a certain point with the line, and then the rest of that is six percent, correct?
Correct.
Do you know the distance of the, the length of the fourteen percent incline?
Right here, there's no dimensions on it, so I don't, I don't have it.
Can you measure it? Here's a, here's a rule. Bring that one. I did bring my, here's a, this is what McDonough has, I know he had it last time. He's got fancy, three-sided.
So you want the...
I want the distance of the fourteen percent.
Of the fourteen?
How many feet am I gonna be driving up a fourteen percent incline?
A little bit under eighty feet.
A little bit under eighty feet. Since many of us might conceive the word a little in many different ways, how many what you mean roughly?
Couple inches.
Excuse me?
Couple inches.
Couple inches, okay, so we're not talking more than six inches or more?
No, no.
Okay, so roughly, within a couple of inches, be fourteen percent incline, so eighty feet. And how far is the six percent incline that you then hit after you achieve, after you've driven up the fourteen percent incline?
Eleven.
Excuse me?
Eleven feet.
Eleven feet wide, a little wider than parks.
Correct.
Okay. Now, you get up to the, you get far in, and how wide is that ramp, by the way?
The ramp, I believe, is twenty-two feet.
Twenty-two feet wide?
Yes.
They're in two-way traffic, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And... Twenty-two percent all the way through? Is it any, any thinner anywhere, or is it twenty-two?
Twenty-two foot.
Let me ask you a few questions about the third floor. I now get up to the third floor, is there any incline of any of the spaces on the third floor?
No.
And... How did you determine that incline would be fourteen percent?
By verifying the heights and making sure that we complied with the minimum heights that we needed or exceeded those requirements. And based on that, fourteen foot, fourteen percent ramp at that distance gave us the adequate height that we needed.
What source or reference or basis do you have for producing a fourteen percent?
That's the standard from the I T E, and I believe that the traffic consultant can use me to that as well.
That's the standard from the I T E?
A A standard.
Excuse me?
A A standard, just different.
Oh, there are other standards?
Yes.
What are they?
Um, I would refer that to the traffic consultant.
So did the traffic consultant advise you to make this fourteen percent? How did you, how'd you start with, how'd you get fourteen percent? How'd you determine fourteen percent?
By determining the heights that we needed.
What height, what heights, you mean, the clearance heights?
Clearance is no...
What, what is the clearance height in the second level of the garage?
I don't have it in front of me, so when we did the development of the drawings, this section to the building, and we checked out our conditions that we had to maintain, the minimums that we had to maintain, and we're able to comply with the code. What we're doing to design the actual building?
Comply with what code?
The height requirements for parking areas, structures, so forth.
What code, precisely you're referring to, you said you complied with the codes, what code?
International Building Code.
The International Building Code, and what is the height required by International Building Code in this structure?
It's not a specific height, it's some minimums you have to maintain.
What's the minimum you have to maintain?
At the locations where we have the cars, where dependent with an A D A issue, we have to have certain height requirements for A D A issue for vans. We have, we also have to comply with some minimum heights as far as the natural parking structures, to clear some ramps and some columns. So basically, when we, when we designed this section of the building, we made sure that we were able to comply with it.
And real simple question, what's that height? What's the height for the structure where there's no A D A or garage?
Seven foot one.
Seven foot one, correct. Will a van coming in on a fourteen percent incline clear seven foot one?
No.
One.
But you're asking what the code was.
Well, what's this height?
I'd have to look at the section that we developed, I don't have it.
Well, after break, we'll come back. We'll save that for a few minutes. Where... Perhaps I'm not seeing it, and I apologize. Where is the trash compa, is there a trash compactor anywhere on the, the third floor plan?
No.
No, so... And you also have a bicycle station, storage area, shown on the third floor plan, correct?
Correct.
And that's directly above and in the same location in relation to the second floor as the one with the second floor?
That's correct.
For sake of brevity, or if I were to ask you all of the series of questions about the bicycle storage and its use that I asked you about the third floor one, that I just asked you a few moments ago about the second floor one, would your answers be the same?
Yes.
You're showing, um...
We'll take a, a ten-minute break.
That's cool. I'm not sure the letters are named, so nobody, nobody... So I'm not sure, I'm not sure you're gonna hear the words. I expect, who, who expect, oh, that's... Me too. Me too. It's not gonna be right. We may have a special name. Oh, I think that we're going to try to respect the language. You gotta give us a break. Come on, read it. Yes, sir. No problem.
It's just, it's just like, this is just like, very still.
Okay, so anyone that's interested, uh, the Giants are winning three to.
I'm waiting for, I'm waiting for the three and four. Three to Giants. Bottom of the, what, three to, three to Giants. I, I should stop it. But I'm waiting for the, you know, like, yeah, I'm going to say the top, I'm going to say the fifth thing. What? I do, I do great counts, I'm a bench and judge fan. Well, I think you're telling me I'm Mickey Rollins. Well, but, but, but these things happen, they actually come back. So. Come back and give them. Uh, we're talking, uh, Boe talks about today's game. The last game, he was massive, he was unbelievable. He was really great. Our stenographer has said that we can continue the hearing. So we'll continue the hearing. Everybody, we stop at ten thirty, no matter what's going on. Always, always, that's our, we're, our limit's ten thirty. Then you can stop. It's up to you. I understand. I understand. Okay, why don't we continue the hearing, um, again, with the sort of counter, will you object or overturn?
Good evening, Mr. Aracidia, John Panto, it's going to be Zor. Questions about the plan, I'm now looking at eight, ten still, um... Will you? I think I asked you, I don't know if you're ready to have a chance, you said, if I, I asked you the width of the aisle on the third floor plan, in the double loaded spaces opposite the handicap space? I'm sorry, excuse me, not opposite the handicap space. I'm sorry, opposite the three spaces, um, in the middle, just to the southerly side of the elevator.
Twenty-one feet.
Excuse me, twenty-one feet? And I'm sorry if I didn't really understand it, Mr. ... What was, you said that the ITD standard was the standard or reference based on what you developed at fourteen percent slope and a six percent slope? Is that correct?
I said that's one of the references, but again, I'll, I'll let that answer by the type of consultant that we use.
I'll get to him in a moment, but you, you said you consulted, what other references did you and he talk about?
A number of references, but he's more familiar with the, uh...
What other reference?
You got a hat and a...
No, I'm going to get to him later. Just ask me if you don't.
Then I'll defer to that.
Okay. Thank you. Just for clarification, the areas that bear the crosshatching. For example, the ones just that surround the tandem spaces, northerly side of the third floor parking. Is that crosshatching a solid wall, or is that crosshatching simply to be striped on, on the floor of the, of, of the garage?
It would just be strapping on the floor, pretty much, that's all.
Okay, and the same thing is so next to the, um... The striping on the three spaces that sit just to the southerly, southerly side of the, uh, of the elevator bank on the third floor.
The handicap spaces?
No, no, I don't see any, I'm told the third floor, I don't see any handicap spaces on the third floor. Am I mistaken?
That's strapping on, that's strapping on the ground.
I'm sorry, there are no, let's be clear, there are no handicap spaces on the third floor, correct?
Yes.
That's correct, okay. If you know, if you don't, that's fine. The eight by seventeen last space, the last, it's the far tandem space. Eight by seventeen, one closest to sixty seventh street. Correct?
Yes.
What's the turning radius for a car coming out of that, which is not a compact car, because it's unlimited as a compact car?
I don't know.
If I were to ask you turning radii for any of the spaces, would you know it, would you know that?
Not specifically, no.
What, what does that mean?
That when we develop some plans, we usually have templates that we use, so I would prefer the template. So if you're asking me offhand right now if I know what the turning radius are, my answer is I do know.
Well, if you went back to your office and pulled out the template, did you tell me what the turning radius is?
Yes, I could.
But it's not shown, either.
That's correct.
Well, incredibly, I think you come back, because that's a piece of information you want to know, critical to this, this operator. Fact. It's going to be a number. I think I asked this before, what reference did you use to demarcate what, what, what is or is not a, a set of, a compact space? What, what defines a compact space based on what's depicted on this plan?
Well, it's defined under the RSIS, so...
What's the size of compact spaces in the RSIS?
I answered that already, go to the record. Okay, so basically, anything under, anything under, over that space between the nine and eight, anything from the nine by eighteen, that, I wouldn't consider that a common.
Okay. Okay. Spaces come in different widths, don't they? Parking stalls come in different widths, don't they? Yes or no?
Yes.
Okay, you're, you're an architect, and you've designed a lot of parking spaces in New York, correct?
I've done a few.
Okay. Three or thirty?
A few.
Three, define a few for this.
Three of thirty what? Spaces?
No, you said he's done three, I'm asking, three of thirty parking plans for garages?
You, you're questioning.
Okay, strike it, we'll, we'll do it this way. How many, thank you, how many, I remember, parking garage designs have you done in your role as an architect?
Throughout my career?
Yes.
Hundreds.
Okay. Is it fair that you have designed garages, indoor garages or parking garages, with different parking stall lengths?
Yes.
Okay, good. Let's do a little exercises, you're an architect. Do you have a ruler?
I have a scale, yes.
Okay. Hypothetically, let's start on the first floor and move on to the third floor. Hypothetically, if you use the RSIS parking stall standard, that's nine by eighteen, okay? Hypothetically, starting on the first floor and going each to the size, I would want to do an exercise to see how many spaces you would achieve if you met the RSIS standard. Okay, so we'll look at sheet A, A one hundred, ground floor parking. If you could take out your scale, examine the, the spaces from the valet parking on the first floor, moving seven by seventeen, I count. I count eleven spaces. If you used a nine foot width, how many spaces would you achieve?
It would depend on the column spacing, where everyone from my column, so I couldn't do that at this point in time.
So I can ask you a hypothetical, you're an expert, you've designed hundreds of spaces.
I couldn't do that.
No, yes, you can.
I just told you I can't.
Excuse me?
I cannot, because I would have to design columns in between, so I cannot.
Assume the number of columns you need using nine foot wide spaces.
I will not in this situation.
Tell, I'll ask you again a different way. The RSIS standard is how wide?
Nine.
Mr. Chairman, it's been asked and answered, he says he can't do it at this point, because he's got to, he's asked to determine the columns and it's every year.
My understanding is you can rephrase the question.
Rephrase the question. Hypothetically, hypothetically, how many columns do you need on that wall?
It depends.
On what?
The structure, the depth of the slab, the reinforcing in the concrete, the strength of the concrete. It depends on all those issues.
Mr. Aracidia, I'm going to ask you a series of questions designed to elicit an answer as to how many spaces you can get along the wall if they're nine foot wide, so we can do it slowly, or we can do it fast, it's going to be your choice. Okay, so I'm going to assume everything else is structurally identical with this building, the way it's built. Make that assumption as a hypothetical, okay? How many, make an assumption as to how many columns you might need. Tell me, you're only assuming, it might be more, it might be less. So you get to, to build in the assumptions of the number of columns. Using your assumptions, exact structural design, using wall, in nine foot wide spaces on the northerly side of this building at sixty seventh street, how many spaces do you get in place of the eleven that are shown there? You, you tell me, sitting here as an expert, make assumptions about the number of columns you may or may not need, more or less, and tell me how many nine foot wide spaces you achieve on that far side, given all the same structural...
Roughly ten.
Excuse me?
Roughly ten.
Exactly ten or a little less than ten?
Roughly ten.
Roughly ten, okay? Do the same thing for the, do the same thing for the, and I'll take roughly ten, just for this exercise has ten. I'll say you can get ten space. Okay? Now do the exercise, please, for the row of spaces that runs from this northerly part of Boulevard, damn, excuse me, with Merida Road project, to the southerly side on the westerly most column, starting with eight by fifteen compact space and continuing down with my seventeen space adjacent to utilities, including the staircase. Again, make assumptions as to how many columns you might need, tell me roughly how many spaces you get on that side?
Nine.
Using a nine foot...
He said nine.
I'm sorry. How many do you get?
Nine.
He says nine, okay, thank you, sorry. Let's do the same exercise using the, um, nine foot wide, nine foot wide spacing for the southern, the southernmost, series of spaces running from utilities to management.
Ten.
Okay? Let's go on to the second floor, please. Turn the page and do the same. Okay, so we're going to, now it's down, on the second floor parking, um, let's first look at the first row of spaces. Oh, and by the way, I'm going to ask you, on the second floor plan, those... The first five spaces on the right hand side would enter the parking garage from sixty seventh, those are all sitting on a six percent slope, correct? Second floor, before it stops.
Yes.
Okay, so let's, now, now let's do this exercise again. The number of spaces along the westerly side of the building from sixty seventh street with the first, first space is seven by seventeen, all the way down to the space adjacent to the utility, in that row.
Nine.
Nine, okay? And let's go to the series of spaces, um, from the utility, uh, side along the southerly wall to the indoor dog park.
Ten.
And now let's take the series of spaces that, uh, joins, it is, excuse me, close to the Boulevard East, running from the dog park to the bicycle street, bicycle station.
Eleven.
Eleven. And how many spaces do you get using the, the three spaces that are between the bicycle station and the transformer?
Two.
Okay? And how many spaces do you get for the area between the transformer and staircase A?
Three.
Let's look at the third floor. Okay? Can we do the same exercise, please, for the third floor, according to the standard? Let's start with the, um, let's start with the, uh, series of spaces all the way to the westerly side, the first one being seven by seventeen and continuing down to the utility floor, the utility box.
Nine.
Okay? And let's go along the westerly side, from the utilities corner on the, on the westerly side, the utilities corner on the eastward side.
Ten.
Ten, okay? And now let's continue along the third floor on the Boulevard side, by, by the way, I'm sorry. From the, from the utility box up along that line of spaces to bicycle station, if we use a nine foot wide space.
Eleven.
Okay, and how about the three spaces, three spaces between the, next to the bicycle station and the tandem parking spaces?
Two.
Two. And how about the tandem parking spaces? How many do we get if we use a nine foot wide spaces? So you showed a total of four tandem parking spaces, how many do we get?
Two.
We get two total. Okay? And finally, there are two other areas, the three spaces, um... The three spaces in the, um... Three spaces, uh, just beneath the elevator?
Three.
Three, you still, you still got three spaces there? And how about the two spaces above the park for the staircase A, there with nine?
Two.
Two, you still get two over there? How so? You, 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 the, the striped area, the open striped areas run right up?
In fact, I got eliminated the other two on the other side, so I had three, four, now I have two, two spaces on that side.
Okay, so still two. And how about right opposite, the, 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 the two sets of spaces opposite the tandem spaces on both sides? Let's use the, the three spaces on the bicycle street first, come even again. On the side of bicycle station, those three spaces.
Three.
They remain free, because you're going to compensate for the loss of what you want to handle, and is the same true on the other side? Same, same measure, for those who remain free. Let me go back if I could, I overlooked something on the second floor plan in doing this exercise. Tell me what happens with the, uh, handy, the, the series of four spaces, which include the three handicap spaces from... Tell me what happens with the series of four spaces, which include the three handicap spaces from, running from the trash compactor to the right, to the left, three handicap spaces and the eight by seventeen space, do you diminish the number of spaces over there?
Yes, I lose one.
So you lose one and you obviously keep the three handicap.
Correct.
And finally, there are four parking spaces between stair A and the transformer on the second plan. How many spaces are you going to have to get a nine-foot standard there?
Three.
Get over four.
Excuse me?
Excuse me?
Yes.
So you would, I haven't done the math, I'm not that fast, but you've lost several spaces in this exercise utilizing the RSIS nine-foot wide space standard, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Hypothetically, if I gave you more slack and you got an eight and a half foot space wide, I'm going to be generous to you, hypothetically, we use a standard of eight and a half foot wide, what is, what is the difference? Now give you, can you do your math, tell me?
You probably could have.
I'm going to proffer, Mr. Chairman, I have a basis on which to ask in hypotheticals based on different standards and different widths ranging from the seven and eight foot or where the RSIS standard is.
Mr. Chairman, absolutely he can, but the board can set reasonable conditions and limitations with the beer online.
You would like to do the same exercise that you just did.
I'd like you to do the same exercise for two different standards, and I'll proffer one.
This is only the second standard.
I've only asked him on the nine-foot standard.
Right, now you're asking him on?
Eight and a half, eight, eight-six, and we're going to ask him on an eight-three.
She wants three standards.
Three standards, and I, the proffer is because there's RSIS standard, and there are other industry standards out there for eight-three for compact and eight-six for others, or eight-three, and that's crucial for the board to determine the magnitude of varying sort of parking.
Okay.
It's a fast exercise, and if he can't do it now, then come back, but I prefer that he do it now, he went through it pretty quickly. He seems fairly adept at asking.
I have a feeling that you probably would have been able to answer both by now, as opposed to those arguing about it. So why don't we just get it done?
Okay.
Okay.
Why don't we start with eight-six first, through the three floors, and then we'll do the eight-three. Eight foot three.
Why do we have two or three floors?
Well, three floors?
Okay, what did you say?
What I want, well, three standards, because he is showing primarily eight-foot standard.
Okay, let's just get it done.
You're not talking a lot, go ahead, you want to start on the you want to start on the first, on eight-one-hundred with the first floor, go around, you know, go through each, each bank of spaces and tell me what you got using eight, using eight-six, and then we'll do a break, eight-three.
Where do you want to start?
Why don't we start as we did the last one, if it's convenient for you, let's use the first floor parking.
Why don't we do eight-three and eight-six, it might be quicker.
Yeah, you want to do eight-three first and then eight-six?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's why we can go three sections.
Oh, you want me, so you do eight-three on one map, eight-six on the same bank?
I have a move on.
That's fine, that's fine. Okay, so let's start, if you will, on the first bank on the first floor between valet parking and utilities, on the sixty-seventh street side. Let's do an eight-foot, three-inch wide parking space standard. Ten? Okay, so eight-three, eight-three here producing ten. Okay, and eight-six?
Nine.
Okay, let's go, if you will, to let's go, if you will, to the westerly side from utilities to utilities.
Eleven.
Eleven, eight-three.
Ten, eight-six.
Ten, eight-six. Okay, and let's go from utilities to management office.
Eleven.
Eleven, eight-three.
And ten, eight-six.
Okay, and let's do the interior spaces, handicap spaces first, on the lower, on the ground level.
Handicap will change.
I'm sorry?
Handicap will be no change.
Okay, so no change under either?
Handicap spaces are what they are. Handicap spaces are what they are.
Okay, okay, fine. Let's do the spaces from the seven-seventeen space down next to the handicap and behind the handicap.
You know, Mr. Cantoritz, the board can take you, this will notice that if the applicant were to have parking spaces that met the requirements and didn't need variances, that he would have less parking spaces than if he had either eight-point-three or eight-point-six.
I'm sorry, eight foot three inches, not eight-point-three, eight foot three inches.
Okay, okay. Do you understand?
My point is, though, yeah, we can make institutional notice, the board can do that, but obviously we have fewer. It's crucial, though, is how many fewer, because that's the magnitude there. So the sum is crucial.
Okay. I understand your point.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. Aracivia, we're working on the bank from seven-seven behind the handicap down to the elevator, and then that other, the other set of spaces that run on the southerly side of the elevator, those two banks.
You'd get five, eight-three. And you'd get five, eight-six.
Okay, that's for that bank that runs north-south, and the bank that runs east-twist on the elevator, behind, to the southerly side of the elevator.
You'd get five, and we're both.
Okay? Thank you, let's go up to let's go up to the sheet eight-ten showing the proposed second floor plan and the third floor plan, let's just work our way around, starting with the westerly most bank of spaces on the second floor running from the sixty-seventh street down to the utilities.
You'd get twelve, eight-three, eleven, eight-six.
Okay, and the bank running from the utilities to the series running from utilities to the door park, indoor door park on the seventh floor.
You'd get eleven, eight-three, and ten, eight-six.
Okay? And the series of spaces running from the door park up to the bicycle station, that closes to King Boulevard.
You'd get twelve, eight-three, eleven, eight-six.
Okay, three spaces between the bicycle station and the transformer on the seventh floor, has that?
You'd get two, and you'd get two.
And finally, on this floor, the four spaces between the transformer and stair A.
You'd get three.
Excuse me?
Three and three.
Oh, yes, thank you. And is there any effect on, and if the finally spaces come just to the west of the two utilities behind the lobby? That, see where it is?
Yes. You'd get two and two.
And finally, the bank with the handicap spaces, what do you get?
You'd lose a space.
So on both, eight, on eight-three and eight-six, you'd only have three, you have three handicap spaces, you'd lose that other space.
That's correct.
And let's go over now, please, to third floor. Let's start on the westerly most side.
I think it'll be the same as the fourth. It's the same stall, so the same number of cars.
So it's going to be eight foot three, you're going to get twelve, and eight-six, you're going to get eleven?
Correct.
Okay, how about the utilities to utilities, is that the same?
Same thing.
Same, it's identical? Okay, so that's correct, at eight-three, you're going to get eleven, and eight-six, you're going to get ten?
Correct.
Okay, how about the, going around to the cycle, excuse me, series from utilities to bicycle station?
Same thing.
Eight-three is going to be twelve, and eight-six is going to be eleven?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And finally, let's talk about the tandem spaces and the other, the other spaces we have on the third floor.
Same thing.
I'm sorry, tandem is going to go to two?
Correct.
And the other, how about the other three spaces?
They're also going to go to two.
Three spaces between the bicycle rap, bicycle station and this tandem?
I think it'd be three.
Those can stay three?
Yes.
How so?
Move the column.
I don't understand.
There's a column there. I can move the column to the other side.
Where's, where's the column?
The first spot of the three.
Yeah.
Away from the bicycle.
Oh, right, that little square.
There, that's a column.
That little square right above, to the left of the word B, the letter B, that little, is that the column?
That's a column on that side and a column on the other side.
So if you move that, you maintain three, three-three?
Yeah.
And also three-eight-six, you said?
Correct.
Same thing?
Okay.
And how, any other three spaces behind tandem to the staircase A, how many of that changed, I'm sorry, your five spaces are shown from tandem parking down to stair A on the third floor, how many, how many of those five spaces do you?
I'll lose one, so we have four.
For both measures?
Correct.
Okay? Well, I think the only other measure we got to do is the series of spaces just to the south of the elevator. See the three spaces, did you lose any?
I think I'd keep the three.
But to both measures?
Yes.
How so?
So we locate the column. We locate the column, are we locating the column?
I see two, I noticed two columns, am I correct there?
That's correct.
Okay, so you can relocate those and use the width of the striped area to gain the extra space.
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, I have other questions about the parking layout, aisle width, I'm sure if you want me to start in on that, pause now. Same series of questions, I don't want to finish them, go to the next stories.
We can pause.
I'm looking at the clock, we're just going to...
I'm looking at faces. Let's see, everybody looks exhausted. On that being the case, we will adjourn this hearing at this point, we'll carry it to our next regular meeting, which is November thirteenth. The council chambers, again, six-thirty in the evening.
I have a couple of closing questions for you. First of all, is the agenda that we're doing, and would that affect what time you will start, if the meeting starts at six-thirty, or how do you, how do you want the chair?
Well, the only matters that we heard would be housekeeping matters, payment bills, things like that. I believe no other applications heard in court. There may be applications listed in the sense of taking public notices so people aren't going to spend more money and things like that, but this application will start on the sixth, six-thirty shot.
Okay, thank you. Another question is just the housekeeping. I will provide, Mr. Boris.
Boris, with all the documents.
With all the documentation, I will provide.
Well, what I would do is I would wait for Mr. Alonso to make the request, and when he arrives, include Mr. Boris, and also, I guess, Mr. Aracivia will have the whole flag, twelve-month shadow study, as well as a timeline video for Mr. Cantoritz to really go on.
And we'll submit to Mr. Boris the other documents that we have on the record.
On the memo?
There's a email, if you have something.
On your memo, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, thank you very much.
There'll be no further public notices, as we've just announced, that this matter will be carried to a regular meeting on November thirteenth, six-thirty in the council chambers. Thank you very much, everybody, for your attention and for coming. Oh, yes, okay, I'm sorry, at this point in time, it's a little more thing to do, I'll now open the meeting to the public. Anybody that wants to come forward and, you know, shower praise upon this board of speakers. Not too shy. We won't take that as a credit, of course, we will take that as a heartfelt call. Thank you very much, and we hope to see you again on the thirteenth November.
Thank you.